Good afternoon, everyone. I'll call this meeting of Stratford City Council to order. And we'll begin this evening, or this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item number two is declaration of the community interest and the general nature thereof.
Seeing no hands with regard to council, we'll move forward.
Item number three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated October 12th, 2021, and the special meeting dated October 18th, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Who by councillor Bunting and seconded by councillor Burbak, the minutes be adopted, discussion. See none, all in favor? Opposed any? And that's carried?
Item number four is adoption of the addendum, and there is an addendum to be adopted for the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there's a motion that the addendum to the Planning and Heritage Committee agenda dated October 25th, the add agenda is printed to include the following. For item four, report of the manager of planning, item 4.3, a planning report, official plan amendment, application, and zone change amendment, there was correspondence which was omitted from the agenda and has been listed with the addendum for consideration of committee. Following the deadline for inclusion with the agenda, correspondence from a number of citizens was also received as included with this addendum for consideration of committee. And there is a motion to be added that the correspondence from the following citizens regarding official plan amendment application, OPAO 120, and zone change amendment Z 0620 received for information.
Councillor Ingram will move, and councillor Ritzman will second the adoption of the addenda, the planning committee this afternoon. Anything further? If not, all in favor? Opposed any? That's carried. Thank you.
Through your worship, item five is report of the committee of the whole in camera session. Item 5.1, at the September 27th, 2021 session, under the municipal 2001, as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. 4.1, city industrial land pricing policy annual review, and that was under a proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality. And there is a motion that the industrial land prices policy E.1.2 be amended as follows. The price per acre in phase two of the Wright Business Park be increased from 125,000 per acre to 135,000 per acre effective April 1st, 2022. For any remaining unsold lots or affected June 1, 2022, if the lands are in reserve status. Price per acre in the Crane West Business Park be increased from 145,000 per acre to 155,000 per acre effective April 1, 2022, for any remaining unsold lots or effective June 1, 2022, if the lands are in reserve status. Remaining 12 acre parcel in phase one of the Wright Business Park be increased by 10,000 to 120,000 per acre and sold at set price of 1,444,000 effective April 1, 2022. If the lands remain unsold or effective June 1, 2022, if the lands are in reserve status. And that the industrial land prices policy E.1.2 be reviewed as part of any new city industrial lands being made available for sale to ensure that the price per acre between new and remaining existing lands are adjusted and balanced accordingly.
Thank you. That is just for the... First one is a mover for that. Councillor Clifford and seconder is councillor Razalakos, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, 5.2, at the October 12th, 2021 session, under the municipal 2001, as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. 4.1, proposed disposition of land in the Crane West Business Park, and that was under the exception of proposed impending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality. And there is a motion that the Corporation of the City of Stratford hereby consents to the sale of lot 1, Plan 44R-5904, designated as part of Lot 2, concession 3, designated as part 6, 7, and 8 on reference Plan 44R-5904 in the City of Stratford, County of Perth, in the Crane West Business Park, to 2389273 Ontario Limited.
Mover, councillor Gaffney, seconder councillor Razalakos, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 5.3, at the October 18th, 2021 session, under the municipal 2001, as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. 3.1, good governance, education, and training session. This was a meeting of a council or committee of either of them, which may be close to the public. If the following conditions are both satisfied, the meeting was held to the purpose of educating or training the members. And at the meeting, no member discussed or otherwise dealt with any matter in a way that materially advanced the business or decision making of the council. And as the purpose of the in-camera session was to provide education and training, there was no direction given.
Thank you.
Item 5.4, at the October 25th, 2021 session, under the municipal 2001, as amended, matters concerning the following items were considered, and there was a new item which was added earlier in open session prior to going into adjournment of in-camera. And that was that the following matter be added for consideration at the October 25th, 2021 in-camera session. And that was 4.1, potential Ontario land tribunal settlement, 236 Britannia Street. And that was under the exception of litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. And advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. That the items listed for consideration at the October 25th, 2021 in-camera session be numbered accordingly. And that the notice requirements outlined in the procedure by law 140,007 be suspended. Item 5.1 was appointments to Stratford Public Library Board, and that was under the exception of personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees. 6.1, administrative salary review, labor relations, or employee negotiations. And 7.1, the proposed renewable natural gas project update, and that was under exceptions of information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or crown agency, or any of them, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group, or persons or organization. A position plan, procedure criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And another item added being the advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on all items.
Thank you.
Through your worship, item six is hearings of delegations and presentations, and they are non-scheduled. Item seven, orders of the day, and item 7.1 is correspondence, OLT file number LC 120027. And that was a decision being rendered by the Ontario Land Tribunal in file number LC 120027 regarding 1353837, Ontario Incorporated, the Stratford. And that is provided for the information of council.
Thank you.
Item 7.2 is correspondence from the Perth County Municipal Association Annual Meeting. And that is for the annual Perth County Municipal Association meeting being held on November 17th, 2021, beginning at 8:30 a.m. The deadline to administer is November 12th, 2021, and further information is included on the attached invitation, and that was also provided for the information of council.
Thank you.
Through your worship, item 7.3 is a resolution for Albert Street road widening, and there is a staff recommendation that the Corporation of the City of Stratford accept Part 5, Plan 44R-5881 as public highway and dedicate it as forming part of Albert Street.
Thank you councillor Razalakos and councillor Ingram moving and seconding, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 7.4 is a resolution of employment services transformation, call for proposal and consortium agreement. And there is a staff recommendation that council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford authorize the entering into of the consortium agreement between the four consolidated municipal service managers in the Stratford-Brusco Peninsula Economic Region, including the county of Huron, county of Bruce, and Gray County, with Bruce County acting as the lead agency. That the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the consortium agreement on behalf of the municipal corporation. That staff be authorized to complete the provincial call for proposal to formally be considered for the role of service system manager for community-based employment and training services within the Stratford-Brusco Peninsula Economic Region. That any proposed final agreement between the province of Ontario and consortium be signed by Bruce County as the consortium lead, subject to the program being 100% funded by the province of Ontario and cost neutral to the city of Stratford. And that the proposed service system manager agreement be established on business and legal terms satisfactory to all members of the consortium. And that their governing bodies with final approval for a provincial agreement be subject to council approval at a future date.
Councillor Gaffney moving, second by councillor Burbak, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 7.5 is a resolution for community transportation update and program extension. And there is a staff recommendation that staff be authorized to submit revised budget documents to the Ministry of Transportation for the continuation of the Community Transportation Pilot Program to March 31, 2025, at current service levels. That the mayor, city clerk, and chief administrative officer or their respective delegates be authorized to execute the transfer payment agreement and other necessary documentation or reports with the Ministry of Transportation as required for the purpose of extending Community Transportation Pilot Program to March 31st, 2025. And that staff be directed to work with MetroLinks, municipal, and community partners, and key stakeholders to build a business case for increased go-train frequency and service sustainability.
Councillor Ritzman, second by councillor Bunting. Just like council know that there is already a meeting scheduled between the city staff and our tourism department, as well as economic development on November, in November, to start working on a number of different initiatives. So this will continue to move forward. All right. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 7.6 is a resolution for Veterans Affairs Canada Community War Memorial Application, Memorial Gardens Restoration. There's a staff recommendation that city staff be authorized to apply to the Veterans Affairs Canada's Community War Memorial Fund for Stratford Memorial Gardens Restoration and Accessibility Upgrades. That the city's share of the Memorial Gardens Restoration funding be allocated through the Parks Facilities Improvement Budget subject to approval of the city's VAC grant application by Veterans Affairs Canada. That the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to enter into a contribution agreement with Veterans Affairs Canada to carry out the Memorial Gardens Restoration Project, subject to approval of the city's VAC grant application by Veterans Affairs Canada. And that an exemption be granted from the purchasing policy under section 42.1 to award the restoration work directly to Anderson Cemetery Contracting, subject to approval of the city's VAC grant application by Veterans Affairs Canada.
By councillor Henderson, second by councillor Burbak, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 7.7 is a resolution, follow-up on action taken in response to the closed meeting investigation report 2020-01. And there's a staff recommendation that the report entitled "Follow-up on Action Taken in Response to the Closed Meeting Investigation Report 2020-01" be received for information.
Thank you. Mover for that councillor Clifford, councillor Ingram, seconding, discussion. Councillor Seven.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. So in the report, it mentions that we can't change the minutes or agendas. I'm just wondering if the possibility of creating a list with dates that would go along with those meetings based on the new criteria? Would be a possibility?
Mr. Fo or Ms. Thompson?
Through you, your worship, I can begin, and then if the clerk would like to add anything. If I understand the question correctly, it is if a list could be considered. We believe that we have covered that in the report, and it could be... It is something that cannot be done. Staff cannot be directed to modify agendas in minutes. And so therefore, it is not an action that we could endorse.
Thank you. If I could follow up, so aside from changing, I'm wondering if we could create a list as part of an agenda in the future to to sort of align with the past agendas as a reference? And then just include the new criteria? And then, sorry, and then include the new criteria?
Mr. Fo?
So through the chair, so it will be staff's practice that for future agendas going forward to list the items to be listed for consideration, which will include the exemption under the section 239 of municipal act, along with a brief agenda item title. With respect to retroactively creating a new list for past agendas, there is a discussion in the report that that could be seen as substantially changing even further agendas admitted, and it was not recommended as outlined in the report.
Okay, thank you. And I did have... If anyone else would like to comment, I'll just be one second.
Any other member of council having a comment at this time? Anything further?
I just was wondering, we had asked, or I'd asked about a review of in-camera reason or justification by a third party possibly, and I didn't see that mentioned here. It was part of request A, but I didn't see that addressed in the report.
So through you, your worship, as outlined in the report, the recommendation is that should there be a question or concern with the holding of an in-camera session, that the closed meeting investigation process be followed?
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to comment on one further thing that I I didn't see in-camera training that's being proposed. I think yeah, I think this late in the term, I think it would really depend on the cost, I suppose, and how much that would be. So I'm hoping that that would be something that would come to council before, so that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Right, all those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item eight is business for which previous notice was given. And item 8.1 is declaration of 51 McNabb Street as surplus and disposition of municipal property. Notice of intent to declare surplus and to dispose of 51 McNabb Street was given in accordance with policy P.3.1 on October 14 and 16, 2021, Town Prior. And under section 10, notice of intent on October 12th, 2021, on the regular council agenda. And there is a motion that the city council hereby declares part Lot 2, Plan 86, Stratford, as in STF 56501, except R 230008, R 286303, R 152207, City of Stratford, County of Perth, being all of PIN 53109-0103 LT, save and except for a road widening and daylight triangle being vacant city-owned land, known municipally as 51 McNabb Street, to be surplus to the needs of the Corporation of the City of Stratford. And that the method of disposal of the surplus land be by direct sale to an abutting property owner, and with a condition of the sale that the land is to be purchased in its entirety and in the same name that is on title.
Mover? Councillor Razalakos, second or councillor Ingram, councillor Ingram, you should speak to it. No, okay. Anyone? All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item nine is reports of the standing committees, and item 9.1 is reported the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are 12 reports as follows, 9.1.1 Climate Change Planning Update, 9.1.2 Climate Change Planning Update, 9.1.3 Traffic and Parking Bylaw Amendments, 9.1.4 Cooper Lot Free Permit Program, 9.1.5 Cooper Lot Free Permit Program, 9.1.6 Milton Street and Nile Street Always Stop Request, 9.1.7 Milton Street and Nile Street Always Stop Request, 9.1.8 Walnut Street Safety Concerns, 9.1.9 2021 Fluoride Action Plan Update, 9.1.10 Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report 2021, 9.1.11 Fireworks Alternatives, and 9.1.12 Request to Consider Fully or Partially Subsidizing the Humane Society Surrender Fee. And there's a motion that the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee dated October 25th, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Who by councillor Razalakos, second by councillor Burbak, discussion. Councillor Seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I'm pleased to see the climate change plan, the greenhouse gas reduction plan, and I just wanted to comment, sort of paraphrasing from the report, under the One Planet Living Principles. I'm pleased to see the promotion of vegetable protein listed there. So, thank you.
All right. Anything further? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried. Thank you.
Through your worship, item 9.2 is report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there are four reports listed. 9.2.1 Planning Report Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application Zed 09-21379 Ontario Street. Item 9.2.2 Sign Permit for Ground Sign to be erected in place of existing ground sign at 166-194 Ontario Street. 9.2.3 A Proposed Exemption from the Sign Bylaw 159-2004, Section 13 for 925 Ontario Street. And 9.2.4 Annual Building Permit Fee Report 2020. And there is a motion that the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee dated October 25th, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Councillor Ritzman, you'll move his chair, and second by councillor Seven, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried.
Through your worship, item 9.3 is report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are two reports listed. 9.3.1 Financial Statements and Commentary for Festival Hydro, Inc., for Q2 ending June 30th, 2021. And 9.3.2 Financial Statements and Commentary for Ryze Home Hydro Services, Inc., for Q2 ending June 30th, 2021. And there is a motion that the report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee dated October 25th, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Who by councillor Bunting and second by councillor Gaffney, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried. Thank you.
Through your worship, item 10 is notice of intent, and there is none scheduled. Item 11 is reading up the bylaws, and there are eight bylaws listed. 11-1 is to amend zoning bylaw 201-2000 to rezone lands known municipally as 379 Ontario Street. Bylaw 11-2 is execution of consortium agreement for employment services transformation. 11-3 to authorize transfer 2389273 Ontario Limited of Part 6, 7, and 8, Plan 44R-5904 in the Crane West Business Park. 11-4 to accept transfer from JDR Properties, Inc., of Part 5, Plan 44R-5881. 11-5 dedication of Part 5, Plan 44R-5881 as public highway. 11.6 to amend the traffic and parking bylaw 159-2009, Section 82, towing of illegally parked vehicles. 11-7 to amend traffic and parking bylaw 159-2008, Schedule 19, parking permits. And 11.8 to authorize execution of transfer payment agreement to extend the Community Transportation Pilot Program. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
Someone moving, maybe taken collectively, councillor Ingram, councillor Burbak, seconding, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading of bylaws 11, 1 through 8. Councillor Razalakos and councillor Henderson, moving and seconding that the bylaws 11, 1 through 8 be taken collectively for first and second reading. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried. Third and final reading, moved by councillor Bunting and seconded by councillor Beatty, that bylaws 11, 1 through 8 be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed any? And that's carried.
Through your worship, item 12 is a consent agenda, and council is to advise if there's any items they wish to consider.
Councillor Seven.
I would like to move CA 2021-132, a letter from Leamington in support of more long-term care home funding.
Councillor Ritzman, you'll second that? Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed any? That's carried. Anything further under consent agenda? If not, we'd go to new business. Councillor Ingram?
Yes, thank you. I have two items. The first item is a letter and some photos that councillor Razalakos and I both received from Hamlet Estates regarding the sidewalk and a section of the curb cut and an apron repair that they require. There's been a couple of the seniors that do reside within that development that have stumbled along the this section of sidewalk. I believe it's two pieces of sidewalk, and then there's the curb cut and the apron that needs some repair. So I would like to make a motion, please, that we refer this to the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Seconder is councillor Burbak. Councillor Henderson?
I have a question. Is it right where they live, or is it on John Street, or where is it exactly?
So it is the side, the public sidewalk, and then the curb cut is against the street. The apron would be the the section of the driveway in between the sidewalk and the curb cut. So if Hamlet Estates is responsible for that repair, they're willing to do that. But the sidewalk and the curb cut is certainly our responsibility.
And that's on John Street?
Correct. Yeah.
Councillor Razalakos?
I just wanted, I just wanted to follow up that the correspondence has been forwarded to staff, so they are aware of what the request is specifically.
Right. Councillor Seven.
Thank you. I guess just to follow up further, I just was wondering if Mr. Crinkler hadn't been aware, and if this was something they were already trying to deal with, or if this does require referral to the budget?
Yeah, through the chair. I don't think it needs to be referred to the budget as if it is a deficient piece of infrastructure that will address accordingly through staff resources. It wasn't on the list initially, but it has been provided to the manager of the works to look into further.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you. Yes, I have another item. I just wanted to say, give a public...
Can I just finish that last one then? Because we made a motion to refer, so I should call the question.
What can, can I ask a question on that first? I'd like to ask Taylor, when the robot went along and did all the city streets, did it pick that section up?
Go ahead, Mr. Crinkler.
Just gonna find the mute button through the chair. The the camera was called the robot device that did the inspections this year focuses on the sidewalk work. From what I can tell, it didn't pick up this section of sidewalk. So that's, that's something we'll have to look into in terms of the curb work. That is something that is conducted through our road inspections done by staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Right, councillor Ingram, are you done on that one? So I can call the question. Or, okay?
No, yeah, thank you. So if staff are planning to to include this as part of their work plan, then there would be no need for my motion to refer it to the budget.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take that, and the staff already work on it. Is there anything else under new business? Councillor Ingram?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I have a second item. I'd just like to say a public thank you to our police force for their response and their immediate and efficient response regarding... Efficient response regarding the social media frenzy surrounding the central high school shooting threat. It was not deemed to be our our school, but there was quite. As a parent of a twelve year old girl who does attend that school, there was quite a frenzy. Late Saturday night, and the police response was immediate and overnight. And I just want to publicly thank them for their response, because it it did cause quite, quite a bit of panic.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ingram, and I'll make sure that Chief Skinner and Deputy Chief Foster and all the officers. Know of your appreciation and that of the city. Anything further? I take Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I had somebody ask me. Either Thursday or Friday. We now have a flagpole in front of City Hall. And the question, it's kind of funny, the question was. Can we put anything more in front of City Hall to distract from the beautiful. Heritage building, so that every time somebody takes a picture of the front of City Hall, there's something else in the way. So, I pass that along for. For comment, from, probably, probably, somebody made a comment.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I guess they could maybe step, few steps to the left or right and take the flagpole out and still get a picture. The reason the flagpole, and it was donated, by the way, was put there is because currently now to fly a flag to celebrate any one number of the months. To get it put up on City Hall, we have to call over a public utilities trucks, or sorry, a Festival Hydro truck to put the flags up and down. And it's not always convenient to get it done. And it's improper to fly any flag below the Canadian flag atop City Hall. And on days when it becomes icy and staff can't attend to the roof, and we want to honor individuals or anything that's happened with the lowering of a flag. We actually have a flag to do it in front of City Hall, and I'm sure if the person had known that, they might not have maybe made the comment.
Makes perfect sense, your worship.
No problem, Councilor Henderson.
So, are you saying that when people, you know, like autism or veterans or whatever. When they apply now to have the flag flown, they won't be on the entrance anymore, they'll be on that flagpole?
That'll be the intent.
Okay, so it'll just be one time each month, right? Okay, thanks.
It'll just be a lot easier, the City Hall custodian can go and do it, and it's not based on availability of when we can get a hydro truck over with a boom to put it up.
I think it's kind of neat in one way, because some, some of the groups, when they put the flag up, would like to have an actual flag raising. So now we can actually plan a time, go and actually have a flag raising there, so.
Yes, Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship, just, I guess, one question, clarification. Are we still doing the Christmas tree in front of City Hall?
It goes in the other flower bed.
Oh, okay.
It's on the previous years.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. Anything further? If not, a motion to adjourn into standing committee, and our first one is planning and heritage. Moved by Councilor Vazalakos and Councilor Clifford, all those in favor. Opposed, Fanny, and that's carried.
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage Committee to order. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests or the general nature thereof?
Councilor Ritzman, I would declare one with item four point one, is I am a shareholder in one of the firms involved in that transaction. And as such, I will abstain from voting and taking place in discussion on item four one.
Thank you, your worship, any, anything further? Thank you. Moving on to item number three, delegations, there are none scheduled. Item four is reported the manager of planning. And four point one Planning Report Zone Change Application Zed zero eight dash two one. And draft plan of condominium application three one C D M. Two one dash zero zero two for the municipal address of one hundred Gordon Street. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bannon to make a presentation on behalf of staff, Mr. Bannon, are you available?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll just set up the presentation. The zone change application planned condominium were submitted by Baker Planning Group on behalf of M T Booker Assets Incorporated. The zone change application is requesting to change the zoning of the property at one hundred Gordon Street from a highway commercial C two dash nine zone. To a site specific residential fifth density R five bracket one zone. Which will allow the conversion of the existing building into seven residential dwelling units. The proposed draft plan condominium contains a total of seven residential units, nine parking units. Common elements incurred, including visitor parking spaces, utility room, storage room, hallways, elevator, landscape areas, and accessible parking spaces. A planning justification report and a record to say condition that was filed in the environmental site registry were also submitted with these applications. Subject lands are located on the west side of Gordon Street, north of Ontario Street. They have an approximate area of zero point three, zero point one three hectares, a lot furniture of forty two point five meters. There's residential to the north, east, and west of the property, and also to the east is commercial activity, and to the south is commercial. The city's infrastructure has adequate capacity to accommodate an apartment building on the subject lands. Sufficient off street parking and amenity areas being provided on the lands. And existing infrastructure is in place to support the proposed land use. The provincial policy statement supports new developments which efficiently use land resources, infrastructure and public service facilities. The apartment building would contribute to a mix of land uses of the neighborhood and is located on a public transit route. The proposal allows for the intensification of the lands on full municipal services. And have that have sufficient capacity to accommodate the use. The draft plan condominium and the request to rezone the land. To residential fifth density special to allow residential uses are consistent with a provincial policy statement. The subject property is designated residential area in the official plan. The designation permits a range of residential uses, including triplex, townhouse, and low rise apartments. As part of the city's growth management intensification strategy, the official plan supports a review. Of existing zoning regulations and other development standards to remove barriers to intensification. These standards include parking and setback requirements. And that intensification strategy also states a city intensification target of twenty five percent. For citywide residential growth within the built boundary. The requested setback reductions recognize the existing building and parking lot configuration and will allow for additional dwelling units. In a residential area that contributes to achieving the residential targets. The proposed development contributes to a range of housing types and choices that are near commercial development along Ontario Street. The scale of the development respects the massing and density of other buildings along Gordon Street. And there are no changes being made to the exterior facade of the building. And the building will continue to be compatible with the character in the neighborhood. Fencing exists along the rear property line, and the applicant is proposing fencing, fencing alongside lot lines. As a result, there are no additional impacts to the privacy of the adjacent residents. As a result of the development. Official plan also recognizes that with any development, the applicant is to demonstrate that onsite soil quality is suitable for the proposed use. The applicant has completed a record of site condition, which has been filed with the Environmental Site Registry. The proposed zone change application and proposed draft plan of condominium conforms with the official plan. The draft plan condominium for both conforms to the general policies and designations of the official plan and will allow for the reasonable independent operation of the condominium corporation. The subject property is zone C two dash nine, which permits a business office and professional office. The applicant is proposing a site plan, specific R five zone with special provisions to recognize existing setbacks and parking situation on the property. Those regulations include requesting a rear yard depth set reduction from six meters to five point two meters. North side yard reduction to two point six meters. Required size of parking space steps. To five point six meters and increase in the width of the driveway from eight to nine point one meters. The requested provisions to increase the maximum width of the driveway was not discussed at private meeting. And if council decides to approve the rezoning application, they should also pass a resolution that no further notice is required under the Planning Act. The applicant is submitted a sketch that demonstrates that they're able to meet the other requirements of R five zone with the site specific regulations. Reduce setbacks recognize the location of the distant building, and they will not have an impact on the surrounding character of the neighborhood. The reduction of the depth of the parking spaces is consistent with the regulations that are being proposed in the draft comprehensive. Zoning by law, which was recently approved by council. An increased width of the driveway is being requested to recognize width of the existing driveway. The parking lot layout is not being altered, and being that the property is located adjacent to other commercially planned uses. The width of the driveway is not out of character with the surrounding area. Staff are of the opinion that the submitted sketch shows how the property can. Be adequately accommodated on the subject lands. And it recognizes that there is minimal impact on the streetscape of the neighborhood, draft plan condominium. That proposes nine unitized parking spaces with two visitor parking spaces and one barrier free space as part of the common element. Barrier free parking space is not a visitor parking space, but is still within the common element. Draftland condominium will meet the proposed zoning by law requirements. Certain, the application has been circulated. The Engineering Division, Community Services, City Clerk. Fire Department, Hydro One, Festival Hydro, Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, and Concierge, Soleil, Beaumont, have no concerns. Cannon Post has requested that mail delivery to the condominium will be through a lockbox, a centralized block box assembly. And have noted that development includes multi unit residential building with a common indoor entrance, and the developer has to install. Mail delivery equipment within that building to Cannon Post specifications. Building services have noted that all buildings are constructed or to be constructed as defined by the building code. And they want to ensure that the independent operation of the condominium operate condominium development will be completed. And they need to complete all site works as described on the site plan. There's a staff recommendation before you. Playing staff are of the opinion that the zoning by law amendment and the draft plan condominium is consistent with the provincial policy statement. Is conform, in conformity with official plan provisions, meets the intent of the zoning by law and consistent. With the city's strategic priorities and represents good planning. Should the Planning Heritage Committee not approve the staff recommendation, the motion should. Include a statement outlining how the recommendation of the Planning Heritage Committee complies with the P P S and the city's official plan. And how public input was considered. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bannon, any questions? For staff at this time. Seeing none. So there is a staff recommendation that the zoning, zoning of one hundred Gordon Street be changed from highway commercial. C two dash nine zone to residential fifth density R five. Special zone with site specific regulations to allow for rear yard depth of five point two meters. A north, northern side yard width of two point six meters. A depth of five point six meters for parking spaces and a maximum driveway width of nine point one meters. And be approved for the following reasons, the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement, the request is in conformity with the. Goals, objectives, and policies of the official plan. The zone change will provide for a development that is appropriate for the lands, and the public was consulted during the zone change. Circulation and no public input was received. The council passed a resolution that no further notice is required under section thirty four bracket seventeen of the Planning Act. A mover for that moved by Councilor Henderson, second by Councilor Ingram, discussion. I see Councilor Henderson, seven, go ahead, Councilor Henderson.
I can't remember if I asked this question already at the meeting, but. I just wanted to double check, um, so we have an accessible parking spot, what I remember of the Red Cross building. When you went in, you had to go upstairs. So.
Councilor Henderson, you're, you're freezing in that discussion.
Accessible? So my discussion was. From what I remember of the Red Cross building, when you went in, you had to go upstairs, so are any of the units going to be accessible?
Mr. Bannon?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if any of the units are accessible, that's probably a better question to be answered by the developer. They have to meet the Ontario Building Code, so if they do design accessible units, I believe that those units, they would have to do, design. An accessible walkway and entrance into the building, but I'm, I'm unsure whether or not anything on the interior is accessible or not.
Follow up, Councilor Henderson.
Is he available on the phone to answer the question?
Ms. Baker has her hand up.
I don't see that, but Ms. Baker, if you're available, go ahead, thank you, Councilor Vazalakos.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Through the chair to Councilor Henderson, there is actually an elevator in the building, so when you walk in the front door, the first thing you'll see is an elevator and then the stairs. So certainly there is accessibility available to the units within the converted building.
Perfect, thanks for the.
Thank you, Ms. Baker, and, Ms. Councilor Seven, and then Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, I was just wondering if you could clarify, as part of the R five special, does that limit the height of the building as well to the current building height?
Mr. Bannon?
Through the chair, I'm just looking at the by law to, to, to see that, I believe that there is no request to extend the existing height of the building. What is already in place would actually be legal nonconforming, they don't necessarily have to ask for a special provision. To, to recognize what's actually there. If they decided to come in in the future and to expand that building, we would look to them to make sure that any building additions are in conformity with. With the zoning by law, but I'm not sure exactly what the building height is on the property. From my understanding, it's in conformance, but again, Carol, Ms. Baker would be able to. Provide a little bit more detail on that site plan.
Ms. Baker, are you available to answer that?
I am, yes, thank you, too, Councilor Seven, currently the building on site is two and a half stories. And through the new zoning by law that I understand was recommended for approval last Thursday by Planning and Heritage. The R five one zone actually reduces permitted height from fifteen meters down to twelve meters. And so that generally, again, depending on floor heights, it could get you a building slightly higher than is currently there. But the R five one in the new zoning by law, as you are likely aware, also decreases the permitted density down to fifty five units per hectare. And the proposed development before committee today is just under that fifty five units per hectare. So it would be challenging to accommodate between the density limit and the required parking, any more units on the site, so height isn't the only limiting factor. For any future redevelopment.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Councilor Seven, Councilor Gaffney, I have you next.
My apologies, Mr. Chair, I was just going to answer Bonnie's question for.
Thank you, Councilor Gaffney. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Any opposed, and that's unanimous, and let the record note that the mayor did not participate in this discussion. Moving on to item four point two Planning Report. Zoning by law amendment application Zed zero five dash two one with the address of sixteen Blake Street. And I'm going to invite Ms. Bossy to make a presentation on behalf of staff, Ms. Bossy, are you available? I think you are.
Yes, thank you, Chair, so an application was received to rezone sixteen Blake Street. Sixteen Blake Street from an R two bracket one zone to an R three zone to permit the owner to create a free unit converted dwelling. The public meeting for this application was held on June twenty first twenty twenty one. The subject lands are located on the east side of Blake. The subject lands are located on the east side of Blake Street between Duffrenn Street and Crook Street. The lands have an area of seven hundred and thirty seven square meters and a lot area and shape that is consistent with the surrounding land. The uses to the uses to the north, east and west are single detached dwellings and to the south there isn't a semi detached dwelling. This is a view of the property taken on May in May twenty twenty one. This is the concept plans and elevation submitted with the application. The applicant is proposing to widen the existing driveway, demolish the existing garage, build a new garage and build a single story addition at the rear of the. For the proposed third unit. Lands are designated residential area in the official plan and are located in a heritage area. The residential policies include achieving a mix of housing types to provide density in the housing stock and more affordable housing opportunities. Our two zone permits a range of residential uses up to a maximum of two dwelling units. And the proposed R three zone permits up to a maximum of four dwelling units. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing single attached dwelling into a three unit converted dwelling. The law complies with the R three zone regulations. So engineering has advised that the existing sanitary system within the area requires upgrades to accommodate the additional dwelling units. To address this, the applicant has received a sign off on their plumbing permit and has been working to finalize upgrades the sanitary. Few public comments have been received to date, both expressing opposition to the application and raising concerns related to the removal of mature trees slash green space. An adequate adequate sewage to support the three units. A decrease in property value and privacy and the use of the accessory building as an additional dwelling unit. The comments received from the public were included and addressed within the planning report. I would like to note that the applicant is addressing the sanitary concerns. The staff recommendation is that council approve the application to rezone sixteen Blake Street from an R two one zone to an R three zone for the following reasons. Public interest and input was considered. The request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and the official plan. And the request will facilitate development that is appropriate for the lands compatible and it represents good planning. Should the planning and heritage committee not approve the staff recommendation, the motion shall include a statement outlining how the recommendation. Of the planning and heritage committee complies with the provincial policy statement and the city of Stratford official plan and how public input was considered. That concludes my presentation and if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bossy. Questions from council councillor Henderson?
Yes, I was looking at the site plan. It doesn't look like they're addressing the accessibility issue. It looks like there's still steps getting into it and I know at the last meeting they stated they would look at maybe making. The units on the ground floor more accessible or as accessible as possible is my understanding. So if they still have the steps, there are not a ramp. I'm just wondering how that's going to be possible.
Ms. Bossy.
So through the chair, through their building permit, they'll have to comply with the OVC and all of the accessibility requirements. So that will be addressed through their building permit process.
All up councillor Henderson.
Well. How come they didn't have to change their site plan? Drawing for us to see the change there. Because we won't have any option for it to come back to council, right?
Bossy.
So through the chair, through this application, they're not requesting. Any relief to anything related to accessibility. So that would be why they didn't update their site plan. But through the building permit process, they will be required to comply with Ontario building code accessibility requirements. So they will not be able to get a permit unless they meet the requirements of the Ontario building code.
Do I see Ms. Bridge's hand up? Or is that was up previously, Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair, I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Any other comments councillor seven?
Thank you. I just had a question and sort of a general question, but I am wondering specifically to this. I mean, it's probably part of planning procedure, but the 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 notes of public interest was considered and the public was consulted. It seems that. You know, that that's always the case and it doesn't seem to matter what the comments are. I'm just wondering if in this case, what. Was there something mitigated due to the comments? I know there were comments about the the garage and things. I'm just wondering. What was done in this case based on the public comment?
Thank you councillor seven. Ms. Bossy?
So through the chair, the comments of the accessible or accessory building were related to the size. And there was concerns that it would be turned into another dwelling unit. So the proposed accessory building complies with the zoning provisions for accessory buildings and the zoning by law does not allow the conversion of the accessory building into a dwelling unit. So in this case, there was no mitigation. It was just clarifying that. And then in terms of the other comments related to to property values. And sanitary sanitaries being addressed through engineering. And there was concerns about the tree removal, but that will require a permit through the. Private tree preservation by law under community services. So the report addresses how the public comments. Were received and we looked through them and and responded back to them within the report.
Follow up councillor seven.
For the. Regarding the the trees. Do we know at this point if the mature trees will be removed or planning to be removed as part of the process?
Through the chair, through the chair, it's my understanding that there'll be five mature trees that will be removed. Community services is aware of this and they have been circulated on the application. So the applicant. Will be required to get the permit and potentially either replace or provide funds for replacement that will be dealt with through community services.
And if I may follow up, is there? Is there any sort of possibility to have fewer trees affected from this? Because I know the character of a neighborhood is obviously. Quite impacted when a when a mature tree is taken down. I'm just wondering if there. If there is possibility to mitigate that law.
Through the chair, it's my understanding that to widen the driveway and to accommodate the addition and garage, they will be required to with those trees, but. They will have to work with community services and where there is the opportunity for preservation, community services works with the property owner to achieve that.
Thank you.
Any any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, there is a staff recommendation that the that application Z zero five dash two one. To amend the zoning on sixteen Blake Street located on the east side of Blake Street from a residential second density. R two bracket one zone to a residential third density R three zone to permit. A triplex dwelling be approved for the following reason. Reasons, public interest was considered, the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with the official plan. The public was consulted during the zone change circulation and comments. Having received in writing or at the public meeting have been reviewed, considered and analyzed within the planning report and. That the request will facilitate development that is appropriate for the lands is compatible with the surrounding lands is and is good planning. A mover for that motion councillor Ingram move and second by councillor Clifford. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bossy. Moving on to item four point three, planning report official plan amendment application O P A. Zero one dash two zero and zone change amendment Z zero six dash two zero. With the address of three seventy to three ninety six Ontario Street. And I believe Ms. Bridge is available and I invite her to make a presentation and an update on on this particular item. Ms. Bridge?
Thank you. Through the chair. Good afternoon. So you have before you this afternoon a report on. Official plan amendment zero one dash twenty and zoning by law amendment. Z dash zero six twenty for three seventy to three ninety six Ontario Street. As you'll recall, at the September twenty seventh, planning and heritage meeting. These applications were referred back to staff to review possible overall height reductions of the development with the applicant that would be more acceptable to the area. So following this on October twelfth of this year, the applicant submitted a revised concept plan and revisions to their applications. This revised development concept plan and associated materials. Were posted to the city's website and a link to the materials were shared with all of the individuals who had formally requested notice on the applications. So the revised applications are now seeking to amend the official plan designation and the zoning for three eighty to three ninety six Ontario Street. To permit two stacked townhouse buildings with thirty total units. So they would request that the site be redesignated from residential area to high density residential. And to rezone the properties from mixed use residential and neighborhood commercial to a site specific residential fourth density. The revised concept plan is on the screen in front of you. So the four story apartment building has been replaced with two three point five story stacked townhouse buildings. Three stories are fully above grade and one story is partially below grade. A reduction in the total height of the buildings has been proposed from seventeen point five meters to fourteen meters. A reduction in the total number of units has been proposed from thirty four to thirty. Two buildings are now proposed in to replace the one building to help break up the building massing along Ontario Street. And the existing dwelling at three seventy Ontario Street is proposed to be retained and these lands have been removed from both the official plan amendment. And zone change applications. So the applicant has also submitted a conceptual elevation of the proposed stacked townhouses. So you'll see that the proposed building design continues to include a pitched roof. With a rhythm that reflects the roof lines of the existing single detached dwellings along Ontario Street. The design also incorporates front porches with stairs to provide pedestrian access to Ontario Street. And street facing windows. The application requests an official plan amendment and this is to re designate the subject properties from residential to high density residential. This would allow them to develop the site with a maximum density of a hundred units per hectare and a maximum height of six stories. The amendment is required as the proposed development exceeds both the height and density that's permitted as of right in the current residential area designation. So the official plan contains goals and objectives that are related to high density residential areas. And this includes the creation of new high density residential areas in locations that generally respect adjacent development. So official plan policy four six four sets out a framework for new high density residential areas. And this framework specifically requires an amendment to our official plan in order to implement it. The framework also sets out a number of criteria that are to be used to evaluate any proposals for new high density residential areas. So I'll go through these criteria at a high level. And so at a high level, the subject applications provide for a development that widens the range of development forms and densities. Through two stacked townhouse buildings that are primarily street oriented in design. Access to the proposed development is proposed on Queen Street, which has a direct connection to Ontario Street and arterial road. This will minimize traffic impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. The site is located within four hundred meters of a number of parks and recreational opportunities. And is located in proximity to the downtown core and commercial uses along Ontario Street. The official plan policies also require that the proposed development. Be designed to ensure that there are no significant negative impacts with respect to privacy and shadowing. And that appropriate buffering can be provided. For any adjacent residential areas. So it's important to note that the official plan policies require no significant negative impacts with respect to shadowing and privacy. So what this means is that it's anticipated when you have high density residential development proposed. That there'll be some impacts with respect to shadowing and privacy. To demonstrate that there are no significant negative impacts with respect to shadowing. The applicant had submitted a shadow study and this shadow study demonstrated that the. Shadow impacts as a result of the proposed development are largely limited to winter shadows and that there are no. Shadow impacts impacts in the spring, summer and fall. So that shadow study was based on the original development proposal, which was a seventeen point five meter high building. That varied between fifteen to twenty one meters from the northerly property line with a component of the building that was in one. Within one point five meters of the property line. So as mentioned, the revised concept lowers the overall height of the building to fourteen meters. And the building is also set back on average twenty one meters from the northerly property line. So based on the revised development concept in the original shadow study. Staff are of the opinion that there are no significant negative impacts with respect to shadowing from the revised development proposal. To address buffering and privacy, the proposed buildings are cited. On average, twenty one meters from the property line shared with the residential properties to the north. Over twenty meters from the residential properties to the south. So those would be the properties on the opposite side of Ontario Street from the proposed development. And the existing dwelling at three seventy Ontario Street is separated by fifteen meters. In addition, landscape buffers are proposed between the parking area and the northerly property boundary. So the reduction in height in combination with the proposed setbacks. Ensure that there are no significant impacts with respect to privacy and that appropriate buffering is provided. The size and scale of the revised development concept provides for integration with the surrounding residential area. And the subject lands are not located adjacent to any properties. Designated under part four or part five of the Heritage Act and municipal services are available to service the proposed development. The applicant has also made revisions to their zoning by law amendment. So they are seeking to rezone the property to a residential fourth density zone with site specific regulations. So what this zoning by law amendment does is it implements the official plan designation and the development concept. And it provides some certainty about what's to happen on the property. So the official the zoning by law amendment sets a maximum building height of fourteen meters and three point five stories. And if a future landowner or the developer changed their development concept and it was to go above and beyond this fourteen meters or three point five stories. It would require a subsequent amendment to the zoning by law, which would be a fully public process. This proposed building height allows a three point five story stacked townhouse building and a pitch roof design. To reflect the heritage character of the area. And the zoning by law amendment also requests a reduced exterior side yard setback. So as mentioned at the last meeting, Ontario Street is considered the exterior side yard in this case. And through a future site plan application, a five meter road widening will be required to be conveyed to the city. So until Ontario Street is widened in the future, the functional setback of the building will be eight meters from Ontario Street. Existing setbacks. Along Ontario Street between Front Street and Parfue Drive were analyzed through the applicant's planning justification report. And it demonstrated that existing setbacks along Ontario Street in this location vary. And aligned with the setback that's been requested. So this site specific exterior side yard regulation. Will assist in creating a strong street presence along an arterial roadway and will enhance the streetscape along the Ontario Street corridor. And the applicant is also requested to update the accessible parking space dimensions. And these will reflect the accessible parking space widths for type A and type B spaces. That are reflected in the city's adopted comprehensive zoning by law. And the last specific regulation in the zoning by law has to do with the maximum density. So the zoning by law will also set a maximum density for the site of ninety one units per hectare. There have been a number of public comments received on this application and they are outlined in detail in the management report. With responses about how the revised concept addresses those comments. At a high level, we've received comments about maintaining the OP and precedent. And just to note on that, that an official plan amendment process is contemplated by both the Planning Act and our and our official plan. And that any other applications for high density residential development in the future would be evaluated against those policies of the official plan and their site specific context. Staff recommend approval of both the revised official plan amendment and zone change application for three eighty. Three eighty eight, three ninety and three ninety six Ontario Street. Our staff, it is staff's opinion that the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement. That it's in conformity with the official plan, that the public was consulted and comments that have been received were reviewed, considered and analyzed within the planning report. And because the the concept plan has changed since that public meeting, staffer recommending the council pass a resolution that no further notices required under. Staff are recommending that council pass a resolution that no further notices required under section thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act. Uh, that is all I have for you formally this afternoon. I'd be happy to take any questions that the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge, Counselor Vassalakos and Counselor Henderson.
Um, I had a question about the like the setbacks of twenty meters and twenty-one meters, so you have a setback average of twenty-one meters along the. The other, I guess it becomes the other side yard, but what we looks like the, um, is along the backyard of the people in Coburg. Is there anything within the site-specific zoning that would um, li- limit that? Like it's twenty-one now, what what would it be under the the zoning that it gets and would there be a way to actually set it? So that whatever is built is built on the envelope in the the concept plan.
Uh, through the chair, so no site-specific regulation has been sought for that. This would be referred to as the interior side yard setback. So right now in the R four-two zoning. I'm just have it right in front of me. I'm just gonna look at it to make sure I'm giving you the right. Amount, so it will be required to be six meters or one-half the height of the building, whichever is greater, so seven meters in this case. Um, practically speaking, because the official plan requires the building to be along the front of the street. And there's a certain level of parking that's required to be provided, it's unlikely that the building would be any closer than how it's shown on the concept plan today.
So if I may follow up, would there be a way that we could actually limit that just as like, uh, because you know, the. No significant impacts relies quite heavily on both the height, but then also the distance from that. Um, other, the interior side yard, would there be a way that we could at least um, have a minimum of twenty? Um, built into this or would that be inappropriate?
Uh, through the chair, so certainly we could consider a site-specific um, interior side yard setback. I would recommend that some flexibility is given in that, so it's not to the the maximum showing, just so that when they get into the detailed design of the building, they have. Uh, some flexibility.
Counselor Henderson and then Counselor Ingram.
I have a few things I wanted to ask about. So this kind of looks like uh, the accessibility committee several years ago had got. When they were looking at doing townhouses. And we recommended that they didn't do it because of the fact of all the steps. So they show a lot of steps at the front of the building. So at the back of the building. Are you able just to walk in? And since they've now made it three and a half stories. And part of it's underground, I'm assuming that you have to go downstairs to get to the downstairs part. And maybe upstairs again, so this now makes. As far as I can tell, all those townhouses. Stacked townhouse, whatever you call it, um, not accessible. And the next part is. I looked up stacked townhouses and it said their unit is in elevators in them. Where in the other concept, they were having an elevator, so I'm assuming. Are there elevators planned for each section of fifteen units, even though it says there's no corridor or whatever, because it looks like. There's three, there's three entrances to each. Section of the townhouse, so there'll be six doors on on the front of. That, and my last one is in the drawing that they did now. I don't see any accessible parking spots, even though they mentioned they're doing it. And it looks like that tree is left, but I'm not sure if that's a new tree or if they're planning to leave it.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Ms. Bridge?
Uh, through the chair, so they have not sought any reductions in the accessible parking rate, so through the future site plan application, they would be required to provide. Accessible parking spaces um, in accordance with the rate stipulated in the zoning bylaw. Um. When it comes to whether elevators are provided in.
Just to clearly that, on their plan, they show forty-seven parking spots. So I'm just wondering how they're gonna be able to put two accessible spots that are wider.
Uh, through the chair, um. As mentioned, they'll have to do a detailed site plan for the site. Uh, and in that, they'll have to show the type A and type B spaces with the widths that they've requested through the zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, with respect to the building design, so Counselor Henderson is correct, a stacked townhouse is different than an apartment. In that units are independently accessed, so there is not usually a common corridor. Um, I believe that um, the agent for the applicant is on the line today. And I would ask that she um, answer the question about elevators, because this is not a discussion that staff have had with the developer or their agent at this point in time. Um, and perhaps she can also comment on um, whether any of the units are accessible or proposed to be accessible.
Elliot? Ms. Elliot, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for your question. And through you, Mr. Chair.
There you go.
Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. In terms of accessibility, there is an opportunity. To examine whether any of the ground floor units could be. Through the site plan application process. Um. This could include. Uh, ramps or accessible entrances or changing the. Uh, ground floor elevation so that it is, there are no steps to get into the. Ground floor units, but that's something that that will take a look at through the site plan application.
Thank you.
And in terms of elevators, at this point. There are no elevators proposed.
Thank you. Further questions? I had Counselor Ingram and then Counselor. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead. Ms. Elliot?
Sorry, apologies. Uh, through this future site plan application, there will be an tree management report and Arbor's report. Which determines whether there will be any tree saving on the site. As well as a landscape plan to show any additional tree plantings.
Anything further, Counselor Henderson?
No.
Thank you. So I Counselor Ingram and then Counselor Clifford.
Thank you. So my question is actually for Ms. Bridge. In the uh, zoning bylaw, a parking stall depth. Is a minimum of six meters and the drive aisle is a minimum of six meters, is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, that is correct. So a parking spot in our current zoning bylaw has a minimum depth of six meters and a. Drive aisle that has two-way traffic has a minimum width of six meters as well.
Right, thank you. So so looking at the concept plan that they've provided, to be able to have that drive aisle separating two rows of parking. You have a a minimum width requirement of eighteen meters. Um, and then you have the landscape strip. On that interior side yard, plus you have the walkway uh, adjacent to the buildings, between the buildings and the first row of parking. Um, so to Counselor Vassalakos's point about the minimum um, interior side yard dimension. I I think they're probably restricted anyway, given the zoning bylaw requirements for the parking stall sizes. And the drive aisle in combination with the requirement for the landscape strip and then the uh, the sidewalk. In between the parking row and the building.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Counselor Clifford and then Counselor Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I have a couple of questions. I I want to know from staff. How much is the height allowed with the, if we didn't have an OP change, what puts the height that would be allowed?
Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair, so today the property is designated residential area. And it would be considered a stable residential area, which would um, give it a maximum height of three stories.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Clifford?
And and so what they're proposing, the three-point-five stories. How does that compare with the houses that are on the right of it or the left of it? Are majority of those a three-story building or just? What what type of streetscape will it appear like compared with the existing homes on that street?
Uh, through the chair, so the surrounding neighborhood has a variety of buildings, so there are. Uh, two-story, single-detached dwellings and some of those have attic spaces in them as well. Uh, so they will vary in height, but most of them are are at least one and a half to two stories in height.
Okay, my last question is. Uh, and I know you've talked about this, but I've had people call me about this. When we have an OP change. If the developer that doesn't, that's doing it right now decides to flip the property, decides to sell it. And the OP would allow a six-story building. Uh, and 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 I think you alluded to it, so can you explain what guarantees we have that? If they sold it, uh, we wouldn't get an application, well, I guess we could get an application for like a six-story, but how would that be stopped? Uh, like, can you go through that again, just so I can hear and other people that had that had called me about this?
Through the chair, sure. So there's a couple of things that that OP designation does. So it limits the maximum height to six six stories and it also limits the maximum density to a hundred units per hectare. So you'll see in this proposed development, they're proposing ninety-one units per hectare. So they're very, very close to the maximum density that could be permitted on the site. So that doesn't give them a lot of room to make changes in terms of additional height in the future. Just given the constraints of the site size and the parking that they need to provide. The other thing that we've done is through the zoning bylaw amendment. We've specified a maximum height and a maximum density that provides some certainty. Uh, for the for the future development of the property. And should a future property owner come in and wish to to propose something that differs from that. They would need to go through another rezoning process that would be full- fully public as well.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Clifford. Counselor Seven?
Thank you. Um, and out of my apologies, Ms. Bridge, if you just just answered this, but I I'm just wondering. I just had some noise on my end. Um, I'm just wondering. The the zoning application, has it changed um, to reflect the proposal that was before. Last time as opposed to now, like it's the restriction lower now than it was before?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Seven, yes, that's correct. So the hu- maximum height that was sought in the previous amendment was seventeen-point-five meters. And the maximum height that's in the current amendment before the committee for consideration is fourteen meters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council with regards to questions for the manager of planning? Counselor Burbak?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess my question is. Uh, how restrictive is the the plan they showed us has obviously certain setbacks and. Um, certain design components in it. What sort of flexibility is there for the developer when they're coming up back with a site-specific plan to be different from what we see in front of us now?
Ms. Bridge?
Uh, through the chair, so. Um, the zoning bylaw basically gives them the building envelope that they can build a future building in. So it stipulates how far they can be set back from Ontario Street, how far they can be set back from Queen Street. How high they can be and the maximum density they can be and how much parking they have to provide. So based on all of those regulations that are put in the, it put in place in the zoning bylaw, it's intended to provide. A level of certainty that what they've proposed is what they will develop.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I'm just curious too with the parking, I know that the neighbors that are. Uh, backing on on the north side, uh, are very concerned about the parking being adjacent to their. Um, property lines and that there is a proposed buffer. Um, for of landscaping and so is that a guaranteed piece that will appear in their their final plan?
Through the chair, so you'll notice that the zoning bylaw amendment. Requires the de- development to adhere to section three-point-four of the zoning bylaw, which requires fencing and planting strips, so. Through the site, future site plan application, they'll be required to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Ms. Bridge? Okay, moving forward, uh, there is a motion that uh, the presentation of the following citizens be heard and I will remind you as well. In addition to that list, that's before you also, uh, in the addendum was added Linda McKay and Emily Elliott. So um, is there a motion uh, to receive those presenters? And that's by Counselor Gaffney, second by Counselor Ingram. All in favor? And that's unanimous, just as a preamble before we move forward. Uh, with regards to the present uh, presenters and and I thank you for coming forward. There is a lengthy list, I believe it's nineteen at this point. And so I just ask that all presenters uh, do uh, are respectful of the uh, the time that they're allotted. Um, and a reminder that if another presenter has covered your your points or part of your points. That you can move forward without repeating those comments. I also remind you that if you presented previously, that you will uh, receive a five-minute time slot. And if this is, this is your first opportunity to present to council, that it's a ten-minute time slot. And and I'll apologize in advance uh, for uh, me interrupting your uh. Your presentation by letting you know when there's a minute left in your in your presentation this afternoon. So I'm looking to the clerk and I'm I'm thinking we're ready to move forward if I'm correct and and at that time. Or at this time, I'm wondering if Cynthia Venables is available. And I see her there. There she is.
Hello?
Hello? You are, you are ready to go and we can hear you, okay? And you have a ten-minute timeframe, okay?
Thanks very much. Uh, your worship, the chair and members of council. I respectfully request that Stratford require the three eighty, three ninety-six Ontario Street Chancery Development. Work within our current existing Stratford City official plan. And that the plan amendment application for this property be denied. I think we all agree that the abandoned Golden Bamboo Restaurant is an eyesore. And like the three open lots nearby, it has great potential for environmentally sensitive intensified housing. As a longtime resident of this neighborhood, I welcome this, as do my neighbors. I'm encouraged by the provincial policy statement when it says that in a stable residential area like ours. Potential new development or redevelopment is limited and any intensification will be modest. And incremental to generally maintain the character of the immediate surrounding residential area. Yet the proposal set forward by Chancery is not modest, incremental or limited in the least. And does not respect the general character of our neighborhood. And I will be quite uh, af- you know, affirmative in saying that will have a very negative impact. On Coburg Street, Trow Street and Queen Street. And all of the residents that live there and that will live there to come. Respectfully, with this current proposal by Chancery Development. I continue to think it is greedy and irresponsible planning for the developer to ask the city of Stratford. For its first official high-density plan amendment. To create high-density housing on this tiny, narrow strip of land on Ontario Street at Queen and Trow. An area which has been a stable residential heritage area on our official plan for many, many years. Everyone buying a home in this area trusted that the official plan would be adhered to. All of the homes on both sides of Ontario Street, from Parkview to Nile. Are with the exception of the two converted gas stations, older homes on small lots. Backing onto their equivalent small properties on Coburg and Albert Street. They are not the large suburban properties in subdivisions north of Lake Victoria. These Ontario Street homes on both sides have in many cases been converted to small businesses on the main floor. And small reasonably priced apartments above. The type of rental property of which Stratford is very much in need and is rapidly disappearing. This section of Ontario Street provides a vibrant heritage entrance to our much-advertised historic downtown core. Ontario Street, which is Highway Seven and Queen Street. Will act as the only entrance and exit to this proposed high-density development. Yet it is also the main vehicle entrance to the festival theater. To intensify this tiny vital area to high-density is, I believe, reckless and destructive to the residents of this area. To our many visitors and to our tourism industry now and for years. and to our tourism industry now and for years to come. I was encouraged by the last planning and heritage meeting where many councillors questioned amending our official plan and asked Chancery Development to come back with a compromise and lowered height. What has been submitted now is not a true compromise. When the building has gone from one large story, one large four-story building to two closely situated three and a half story buildings, thirty-four units to thirty-two, covered parking for fifty-seven to forty-seven vehicles now in uncovered parking on an asphalt lot. The destruction of four old homes is now reduced to only dosing only three. But most troubling, this new proposal continues to ask for an official plan amendment. I quote, "Court is submitted in support of the proposed official plan amendment which seeks to be to re-designate the subject lands from residential area to high-density residential area." This designation permits high-density residential uses, including apartments to a maximum of and currently the change, I think, to ninety-two units instead of one hundred per hectare. Minimum height is three stories and the maximum height is still six stories. This is not a compromise. If our official plan is amended, a six-story building is what is allowed and what most residents believe will happen at an enormous profit for the developer. With the official plan amendment to high-density residential, developer can sell the property at a huge profit and a six-story building will also prevail. These destructive scenarios are what many in our neighborhood predict. And I am just not at all assured by the notion that we would have to, in order to stop this from happening, we would have to resubmit requests to our city planner and go through what has clearly been hell for many, many of these residents. And they will be telling you this very clearly over the last year. This kind of insecurity and um, sense that they that their property doesn't matter and their lives don't matter. I don't think that they are very assured by Ms. Bridge's affirmation that they can resubmit uh, a request for a one hundred uh, units per hectare and six uh, six-story building. Councillors may be tempted by the tax revenue that this kind of development will provide, but at what cost to our city in the long term? Likely retaining and restoring our city hall, refusing rail tracks on Lake Victoria. There is a much deeper bottom line than the immediate tax infusion this high-density residential plan amendment offers. The city of Stratford was built on visionary thinking, a tradition that must continue as we make decisions for the twenty-first century. We all agree we need to act right now to address climate change. We need to intensify within our city boundaries and not eat up precious farmland. I was heartened, as were many, to see the end of the MZO at the edge of our city. But I do not see it as environmentally aware to destroy sustainable existing homes on small lots and replace them with new high-density housing with no rules in place to address new environmental technologies and safeguards as outlined by Mr. Sullivan in his presentation to council a few weeks ago. As well, I worry for the health of my neighbors who back on this development, breathing the emissions from forty-seven cars or more, moving in and out many times each day, just meters from their back windows. For the last twenty-five years, I've lived on Front Street, on a tiny lot between Coburg and Water. I do not own a car. We have two wonderful condominium developments as neighbors. They are good neighbors located on a former factory site adjacent to the arena and park. They are suitably scaled and placed for the property and have underground parking. They do not impinge on the older homes around them, unlike this Chancery Development. Our neighborhood is not against development, but I ask our council to make the decisions that ensure successful high-density housing, that they be built in suitable locations within our city boundaries. Many people who have taken the time and considerable effort to speak to you today represent a small percentage of a very concerned group of citizens asking that this official plan amendment for high-density residential housing on Ontario Street between Queen and Trow be denied. We are very importantly now asking that the letter sent to the Planning and Heritage Committee from the Queen Trow lawyer Nancy Smith regarding procedural fairness and natural justice failure of this committee be addressed. The letter also asks that the developer, the neighbors and the city begin using the dispute resolution text outlined in the Planning Act as a mechanism to address the situation you as a council now face. Closing, I've lived in London, Ontario from nineteen seventy to nineteen ninety-five and saw it fall victim to the tax and development temptations in and near the downtown core. Older homes in once heritage neighborhoods adjacent to the downtown core were bulldozed and now thirty years later sit as a parking lot waiting to be developed. The homeowners have moved to the suburbs. Traffic is a nightmare. Since then, London Council has spent millions on millions of dollars trying to fix the problems in their downtown core. Trying to fix problems they themselves created and frankly now are unfixable. I ask our council to please not make these same mistakes. Be the smart city so admired and envied by many. Please require the Ontario Street Chancery Development to work within our existing official plan and deny their plan amendment application for high-density residential at three eighty to three ninety-six Ontario. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions for the presenter? Seeing none. Thank you again for presenting this afternoon. I'm going to move down to the next I have on my list and I'll look to the clerk if if I'm air. Caroline Anndale. Are you available?
Hello?
Yes, Caroline, the floor is yours and a reminder that you have ten minutes and I will I will interrupt at nine. I apologize.
Thank you. Your worship, the Chair and members of council. I am a Coburg Street resident whose home shares a direct boundary with the subject lands. I have lived here for thirty years and never expected that our beloved neighborhood would be pillaged by an indiscriminate developer. Today I ask you to listen to the people of Stratford. As the elected caretakers of our special city, we expect that you will act in our best interest and not in the interest of a developer who seeks to alter our official plan for no good reason and to capitalize on intensification for his own financial gain. We understand that he has a right to ask. This city does not have to say yes. The developer bought the land in two thousand and fifteen and was well aware that this is a very stable residential area with a built form of one and a half and two-story homes. He knew the rules regarding the development under this official plan designation. Residents of Stratford have to follow the rules and we expect that everyone follows the rules. There should be no exception for this developer. We support development and intensification that is appropriate for the size of the land and conforms to the development rules for this current designation. Intensification that is respectful to the ten abutting homes and surrounding neighborhood can be achieved without changing our official plan and reverting to high-density. This should hold true for other stable residential neighborhoods. It is not just about us. The provincial policy statement does not require that a city approve an application that seeks to cram as much as possible onto one relatively small piece of land at the huge expense of adjacent residents and the neighborhood. Intensification should not become a developer's gold rush. Random thoughtless intensification will destroy our beautiful city. This fiasco started ten months ago. In the middle of a pandemic lockdown just before Christmas, in the middle of winter, Mr. Louis Mendez decided to go for the maximum. We have lived ten months of killer stress, not knowing the future of our homes, living environment and neighborhood. We were shocked by the magnitude of the application and our hands were tied behind our backs as we struggled to communicate with each other in lockdown conditions and cold weather. Public engagement with the city and the developer's agents has been seriously constrained by online meetings. We have not felt adequate support and understanding from our elected officials. We have had to struggle and fight to advocate for ourselves and our neighborhood as our concerns appear to fall on deaf ears while the developer pushed his agenda. Written communication from concerned citizens across the city has often been ignored or concerns invalidated. Many people have received no acknowledgement of their emails, letters and phone calls. I have communicated, I have communicated with a few councillors who seem to have listened to me and affirmed at least some of my concerns, particularly regarding the attempt to change our official plan and re-designate to high-density. Sincere thanks to these councillors. The mental and physical toll that this prolonged stress has caused cannot be discounted. Many of us are feeling a sense of despair, some of us depression, anxiety and fear. Is this what you want for your people? We have been told by our city planner and the developer's agent that public opinion has been considered. We feel it has largely been discarded. Our overreaching objection to a change in our official plan packed between the city and citizens of Stratford has largely been ignored. It has been ignored. We have been told that the professional opinions of the developer's planner and city planner prevail. Our city planner has supported the developer's planner. Residents' opinions don't seem to count for much. We are not planners, but we are not idiots and we're not born yesterday. When we receive notice that the developer is seeking to change our official plan and rezone to high-density, we fully understood the seriousness of this application, particularly for the ten abutting homes that share a direct boundary in very close proximity to the proposed development. We are intelligent enough to know the difference between development that is appropriate for the site and area and development that is clearly wrong. We understand the difference between safe, respectful and appropriate development and development that is destructive and will change our living environment and neighborhood forever. This could be a contagion that will spread across Stratford. We will no longer be dramatically different. We will be dramatically ruined. Our concerns regarding significant negative impacts have been stonewalled by the developer's agent and city planner. We have been told there will be no significant negative impacts. We are the ones who live here and we are the ones who live the reality of over-intensification needles from our small outdoor spaces and homes. The developer doesn't care. We are the ones that will suffer the negative impacts that will affect our living environment, our physical and mental health. Living environment is a social determinant of health and our living environment will be significantly impacted. There will be a significant increase in noise from considerable increase in population density in relation to the size of the land and the very close proximity to the abutting properties. Just as it's important to protect rural green space, it's equally important to protect our urban green space. Over-intensification will decimate our neighborhood green space. A number of old beautiful trees have already been felled, including an endangered species of tree. A gorgeous healthy maple sits on death row. Typically, homes in this area have parking spaces in front or to the side and our rear spaces back onto other backyards. Green space will be replaced by an asphalt parking lot for forty-seven vehicles immediately behind our homes. Not great for the people who live here or for the environment. We feel that we have the right to enjoy the simple pleasure of spending time in our small back garden, appreciating trees, sky and bird song. It will be a dramatic change to have many cars parked very close to the shared boundary line and pollution from exhaust emissions of forty-seven vehicles. Our ability to enjoy our little gardens will be significantly diminished. There is also the potential of cars idling, contributing to noise and pollution. The idling by law will be next to impossible to enforce because it's left up to residents to call the police. Light pollution from parking lot illumination will likely mean that our main bedrooms will never be truly dark. Artificial light can disrupt the human body clock and the hormonal system, disrupting sleep and causing health problems. Vehicles coming and going at all hours of the day and night will disrupt the relative quiet of our homes and further disrupt sleep. The developer's recent revision was cobbled together in a very short period of time and could very well be a bait and switch deal. We have been provided with a rudimentary concept drawing and no idea of the backside of the buildings, which will be the reality for the Coburg Street homes. It's just a concept. There is no guarantee that this is what will happen. How can a sound decision be based on this? It is very concerning that the developer is still applying for high-density residential area designation within the official plan and high-density zoning that that will allow up to six stories. Why are they still asking this? There is concern, as I think Cynthia had said, that this will allow the developer to flip the property at a considerable profit with the next owner able to apply for a four to six-story structure, which could then be approved. If the original monolith, totally out of context with the surrounding neighborhood, was recommended by city staff, then it's likely that recommendation in favor of another out-of-context development will be approved. This will set a precedent. We are not fools. How can we trust people who have invalidated our biggest concerns and twisted the truth? It is the opinion of residents that the revised concept plan is still far too much for a stable residential neighborhood and for the size of the property. We are willing to compromise with regards to appropriate intensification and the provision of additional housing on the subject lands. However, we are not willing to compromise our stable residential neighborhood, official plan, our health and relative well-being and our beautiful city. In closing, I respectfully request that the proposed official plan amendments be denied. That the developer develops according to the rules for development in a stable residential area. That zoning is appropriate for the site, for this area and for this area and height is limited to ten meters. Thank you very much for listening to me today.
Thank you. Any questions? Or presenter? Seeing none. Thank you. Ms. Anndale, and next I, on my list, I have Alden Hadwin. Mr. Hadwin available. I look to the clerk.
Alden, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And the floor is yours. A reminder, you have ten minutes and I will give a warning at nine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your worship, the Chair and members of the council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I respectfully request that Stratford not allow any changes or exceptions to the current city official plan to accommodate the planned amendment application OPA zero one dash twenty and zone change amendment Z zero six twenty three seventy, although now it's three eighty to three ninety-six Ontario Street. And I am coming to speak to you from uh, two perspectives. One is that I am a relatively new resident in Stratford. That's four years that I've been living here. And secondly, uh, to try to interest you in a view from thirty thousand feet, the big picture. So first of all, um, Stratford has the rare reputation of having wisely preserved the charm and cultural atmosphere of its origins through architectural preservation, support for the community to grow in a measured thoughtful way. The famous festival, the summer music festival, the chef's school, as well as as well as many fine merchants and restaurants attract patrons. Also because, and that is the important phrase, also because of this overall city charm and secure atmosphere. Tourism is an economic driver of Stratford's economy and it depends on the known setting. Stratford is so attractive to people from other places. And part of that is not just the different forms of entertainment or places to eat. It's because it's a pleasant city to visit. It's beautiful. I chose to move here from Guelph, which is a city in current difficulty. And I think it suffices for brevity to say that one development allowed has led to another. And Guelph has lost the charm of its downtown and actually it's lost its center. But we're not here to talk about Guelph. In comparison, I admire the fact that Stratford is a smart city with an up-to-date, informed view to the future. The city council and mayor are to be congratulated for their dedication and in many cases The city council and mayor are to be congratulated for their dedication and, in many cases, long service. Stratford's city services are excellent. There's good value for taxes paid here. There are many well-maintained parks and tree-lined streets to make this a delightful place to live in all seasons. University of Waterloo campus in Stratford and the RBC data warehouse, just to give two examples, offer a glimpse towards the future as building blocks towards becoming a prosperous, respected centre of innovation. And the city of Stratford had the vision to create an official plan, which is a pact with its residents. And what I would really encourage, as somebody who sees it from the outside while now being part of the inside, is that we not loosely dissemble that plan. And even one change, one amendment, one zonal difference, it opens the door for more. And there are many examples to show this, and the city which I observed, Guelph, when I moved to Guelph, there were forty-two thousand people there, and now, well, it's huge, it's maybe a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And if they had only carefully planned their growth, it would have made all the difference. And Stratford still has that chance. When I moved here, I invested to buy a historic Ontario cottage, and I renovated it. I lived just north of the railway station on Milton Street. I invested in Stratford, not just my house for myself, but in a city that I believe in and which I appreciate so much. My neighbourhood is friendly, creative. It's a neighbourhood of active citizens who follow city news and issues. And my friends and family from other Ontario locations express interest in possibly also choosing Stratford as a place to live. So as a permanent resident, I care very much about the development of all Stratford neighbourhoods, not just my own backyard, not just the backyard and the important privacy and health concerns of the speakers before me, but of Stratford and how it grows as a whole. I do think that, you know, this planning council, this city council, this mayor, you are doing a wonderful job, and I commend you for that. And I hope that perhaps you will give a second thought to this application, because I think that with the new revisions, it comes very close to the official plan. And for that reason, why not just make it stay within the official plan and not break those bounds, not make an exception, not leave the door open for a flip and another developer, or who knows what may happen five, ten years down the road? If you possibly can find a way to work with this developer to stay within the official plan, I think that would be marvelous outcome for everybody. So in closing, I would like to say, we all agree that suitable low-density housing would be a great replacement. Definitely that corner and that area needs some work. It needs some investment, but only as per the city official plan and only towards maintaining a stable residential area. Please do not consider compromising the economic engine of Stratford's extraordinary vision, charm, and tourism success by sacrificing the highly visible corner block at Ontario and Queen Streets. A previous speaker mentioned that is absolutely the way people approach the Stratford Festival, and they expect the beauty of those tree-lined streets and the marvellous mixture of humble and less humble but well-established households with gardens to look at and considerable charm. Yes, one exception opens the door for others, and please do not risk the community spirit of cooperation so strongly represented here for measured growth that is so strong amongst residents. Please continue your great work in keeping as much as you possibly can, and hopefully a hundred percent with the current city official plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for our presenter? Seeing none, thank you again, Ms. Hadwin. Moving on to our next presenter, Ms. Walker Fitzpatrick, I believe, is scheduled next, and I'm looking to the clerk. Let's see if Ms. Walker Fitzpatrick is available, our next presenter.
Hello? Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon and welcome. And you have a ten-minute timeframe, and I will give you a warning at nine, okay? Thank you again for attending.
Thanks. Thank you. Your worship, council staff, thank you for hearing my presentation. I urge this council to have the wisdom to protect our city from inappropriate development by voting no to this application for the amendment OPA 01-20 to our official plan. This amendment would negatively change the historic, well-established, stable residential neighbourhood on a heritage corridor at the gateway to our downtown and the Stratford Festival Theatre, allowing high-density development on a very small, inappropriate piece of land. Well, in looking at this, there is logic, and there is bureaucratic wordplay. So how do we find truth in this land use conflict? Well, two lines of poetry by John Keats, they help throw some light on the situation, and I quote, "Beauty is truth. Truth, beauty, that is all ye know on earth and all ye need to know." Well, it is the beauty of Stratford that contributes to the city's unique sense of place and is crucial to the economic health of our community. The city planning report pertaining to the proposed Chancery development and the official plan amendment recommends that council accepts it. The word "efficiently" is often used to justify. The report claims that there would be no significant negative effects on this neighbourhood, on the citizens living adjacent, or the city as a whole. These claims are at best untruths. We need truth to protect Stratford. Here is a list of untruths. Untruth: Amending our official plan would not be a negative precedent affecting all neighbourhoods. Untruth: Intensifying density precipitously from low to high is good planning. Untruth: There would be no zoning contagion. Untruth: There would be no significant negative effects to adjacent homes from increasing cars and exhaust, traffic jams, forty-seven added cars, noise, garbage, artificial lights, delivery trucks, moving vans, snow removal, air quality, transformer, and twenty-four-seven activity from what, thirty-two residences? Untruth: No significant privacy and quality of life concerns for these citizens? Untruth: The existing buildings are not heritage-worthy because they are not officially designated. Untruth: No significant shadow impacts on adjacent properties, well, maybe in winter. Untruth: Other developers would not see council's approval of official plan amendments as an opportunity to push for more inappropriate concessions. Untruth: The proposed development maintains the structure and character of the immediate residential area, has appropriate height transition, will integrate in a positive interface with adjacent streets and with the existing neighbourhood. Untruth: Proposed replacement buildings have a consistent architecture and are sympathetic to the residential and heritage character of the area and will enhance the Ontario streetscape. Untruth: Addition of fake heritage accents. Pitched roofs, facade design, recesses, projections, particular materials, roof lines will adequately replace true heritage. Untruth: No reduction of green space, trees, the building set back is consistent with existing buildings. But wait, look at the long front yards of numbers three eighty-eight and three ninety. Untruth: The proposed development will not affect Ontario Street as Main Street in terms of visual and heritage character. Untruth: Subject lands are of an appropriate size and location for this level of intensification, and the development respects the existing character of the surrounding area. Untruth: The proposed amendment is in the public interest and represents good planning. On the website, gatekey.ca, which gives a list of the best neighbourhoods of Stratford, Coburg Water is described as "neighbourhood of quintessential charm, exudes charm at its finest with its quiet streets, mature trees, it is steeped in tranquility." This amendment would negate this beauty and become a very unfortunate untruth. The development plan submitted by Robert Ritz is perfect. It is beautiful. It reflects the truth of Stratford's character. It is a win-win-win-win. Intensification, affordable housing, heritage, and it does not require an amendment of our official plan. Stratford deserves planning of very high calibre. Expert, professional planning must recognise the unique character of a city and make recommendations accordingly. Stratford deserves careful planning that takes the character of our city very, very seriously. Decisions must be made that protect and enhance the city, decisions that respect our official plan. I urge council to aim for development as exemplified by Robert Ritz's genius vision for this land, which could provide twenty-four dwellings as compared to Chancery's, what, thirty, thirty-two? A few units is not a loss when balanced against protecting this neighbourhood, our heritage, and our official plan. Well, council holds the power to make this decision from the citizens, not from developers. Councils were elected to represent the citizens, their quality of life, to make good planning decisions for the future health of Stratford. Citizens need their representatives to respect their homes and their neighbourhoods. Has council imagined the serious traffic issues, the construction chaos on these crucial roads right at the time that the Stratford Festival needs to recover from COVID shutdowns? Needs to attract visitors? The Stratford experience would be a very different situation with ugly construction and traffic frustrations, and this is not good economic policy. What are the motives of Chancery to enhance our city? Why was a former version of this company dissolved for non-compliance in two thousand and three? Why did this company acquire this special land knowing that the development they wanted to build did not comply with Stratford's official plan, and their development would not be allowed, should not be allowed? They knew the rules. Well, Rudy Mendez, President of Chancery Mendez Holdings Canada, sent a letter in two thousand and seventeen to the Mississauga City Council in opposition to proposed condominium development, EV Royal. In this letter, Mr. Mendez addresses the following issues with respect to the Mississauga official plan policies. The appropriateness of the application, the relationship of the building to the surrounding area, the appropriate transition of building height and massing, satisfactory resolution of traffic and heritage. At the end of Mr. Mendez's letter, he states, "Prioritising revenue over the preservation of an historic village is tantamount to pimping." A developer opposing a developer for the good of his community, what an example! If council votes to allow this amendment, the land value will be artificially inflated in a very unhealthy way. It would be strong motive to flip the land. Another developer could build a six-story, block-long monstrosity, and Stratford would be well on the way to looking like the worst parts of Mississauga, with busy, multi-lane roads lined with anonymous cookie-cutter geography-of-nowhere buildings.
One minute.
Investment contagion of this kind made housing in Vancouver much less affordable for her citizens. The type of units would be very attractive to out-of-town investors who could set up Airbnbs, not family homes. Damage our city for a few taxes, there are more climate-friendly tax-generating options. Remember the declaration of climate emergency? Untruth: Building a new condo building with thirty, thirty-two units and forty-seven parking spaces in a highly concentrated area is more environmentally responsible than renovating four existing heritage buildings and adding three small buildings. Untruth: For responsible intensification within city boundaries, this small crucial piece of land must be intensified to the highest level. Untruth: The proposed high-density development would not negatively affect the city greenhouse gas emissions. Untruth: Fake heritage is better than real heritage to support Stratford's brand and economic strength. Does the city even have estimates of how many residences will be needed to meet future intensification needs? Truth: Development in this area should be modest, incremental, compatible, and retain, restore, and enhance the heritage assets. Council must find the wisdom and the courage to deny this change to our official plan. Council must understand the obvious truths and the obvious untruths and efficiently deny the Chancery application to change our official plan. If not, it could be the beginning of serious damage to the strength and beauty of our city on this council's watch. We dodged a huge, inappropriate, polluting glass plant. Now, we must protect our official plan. The citizens fighting to protect Stratford's official plan and appropriate development do not receive a salary for all their hard work. They do it for the love of our homes, our quality of life, and for the health of our Stratford Heritage motto, Stratford Heritage Committee motto, honouring our past, preserving our future. Council, take a look at Robert Ritz's plan for renovating four buildings and adding three small new ones. It is genius. It is beautiful. It sits our city. And I really hope that you seriously consider the very human effects of stress that this is having on your citizens that you are elected to represent. Who decides what are acceptable impacts? What are significant impacts? Please, council, have the courage and wisdom to see the truth and untruth and deny this application for an official plan to protect our city, to take it into the future as a smart and beautiful and livable city with true heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Our next presenter will be William Calder. Is Mr. Calder available?
The Chair, Mr. Calder is on the line.
Okay, Mr. Calder, I do not see him, but if he's available, let's go ahead. Mr. Calder, you have ten minutes, and once again, I ask you to be respectful of the time allotment. We still have a significant number of people that want to present, and I'll give you a notice at nine minutes. Thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
Hi, does anyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're connected. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm William Calder, and I reside at thirty-three Trowat. My presentation today is that of a layperson's observation that I hope will provide review to some, and to others listening may provide new information. I will not be citing sections, subsections, paragraphs, sub-paragraph clauses, or sub-clauses from provincial or Stratford official plan or zoning bylaws. For the opportunity to speak today, I would For the opportunity to speak today, I would like to thank Mayor Dan Matson, Councillors Brad Beatty, Graham Bunting, Rudy Burbach, Tom Clifford, Dave Gaffney, Bonnie Anderson, Danielle Ingram, Martin Rizma, Cody Seven, Kathy, that's the last folks. I think we too often perceive our mayor and councillors as titles only. We forget that each title is a person, a fellow citizen. Persons that at the end of their day participating in council meetings, subcommittees, committees, public committees, and even positive business entities, they return to their homes. Place where they seek comfort, they seek security, and a place where fond memories are made. Fear that our mayor and councillors may apply that same unfortunate perception proposals such as this before us today to Chancery Development. This may simply appear to them to be just another proposal for a new building going up in an area surrounded by some other houses. I suggest that each of those other houses are also titles, whether they exist on Ontario Street, Queen Street, Coburg Street, Troat, or any other street outside that block. The titles in this case are represented by address numbers displayed in front of the homes. Behind each of those titles is also a person, persons, families, fellow citizens. Persons that at the end of their workday or school day or activities of those retired return to their homes. Place where they seek comfort, they seek security, and they seek fond memories. These are the people that your decisions will affect. Third piece in this puzzle is Louis Mendez, aka Chancery Development. My following statement is from a business, not personal perspective. Chancery Development has no sentimental attachment to the city of Stratford or this site. Chancery Development does not really care about our mayor, our councillors, our directors, our managers, or our city staff. Chancery Development does not care about our citizens, nor our heritage. Chancery Development does not care about intensification with any built boundaries other than words in the proposal. This is a business venture, period, with one objective, maximum profit. Now, the word intent has appeared several times since Chancery Development's purchase of this property. I come from a profession that viewed intent as representing that which may not be good. 2017, Louis Mendez was in our city, had conversations with someone in our neighborhood regarding his purchase. His intent at that time was to sever two lots off the front of Coburg Street, to be sold and developed his residential property so that they would not be orphaned land. Proposal for the remaining site was to erect 16 townhouses on the block between Queen Street and Troat. That would be concept number one. Now, as a note, if one walked along Coburg or the opposite side of Ontario Street between Queen and Troat, you find eight dwellings on each street. Presently, on the Chancery property along with that same block, there are seven units of residence, including the two new single-family homes being completed. Chancery Development see a residence increase of more than three-fold based on their proposal. But Chancery Development has started with a reasonable proposal. They would then embark on a campaign for absolute maximum profit at the expense of demands on the city and disregard for all residents surrounding the proposed site. During the darkness of COVID, when council meetings were not held in public, Chancery Development would make an application to the city. With this was concept number two. It requested that Stratford Amendment's official plan to allow a new high-density residential area to build within a current stable residential area, a heritage area on a heritage corridor. To be built would be a four-story, single-mass structure running the entire length of the block, containing 36 units. Now, public concern certainly was raised at this application and was voiced at several Zoom events. Chancery Development, they came back with concept number three. They would reduce the size of the project by two units from 36 to 34. The application for official plan amendment was unchanged. Hey, this was not Chancery Development's making a concession. This was Chancery Development making fun of our city, our citizens. This created even greater public concern, which was voiced at our last Heritage Committee meeting in September. Now, city staff is directed to go back to Chancery and have a chat. We now have Chancery Development's concept number four before us today. The application for official plan amendment to allow a new high-density residential area still exists. Proposals to build two stacked townhouse units on the east end of the property and to leave the vacant lots and 370 Ontario intact. Concern for intent again, or smoke and mirrors, seems rather evident. In the cover letter from MHBC dated October 12, 2021, to Stratford Planning, it speaks to 370 Ontario Street. It is proposed to be retained with no changes completed, but these lands are still included in the application for OP amendment as a contributor to the overall design intent for the subject land, also our specific zone changes to the 370. However, I see in the Stratford Planning Management Report for today, October 25, several times they've noted the property located at 370 Ontario Street has been removed from the official planned amendment and zone change application. So which is it? Why would inclusion in the application be necessary if 370 Ontario Street is left intact? Why? We're reading between the lines that says that there is an absolute plan for 370 Ontario Street or for the entire site. If the official plan is amended for the sake of this one single developer, once they have their hands on the golden ticket signed by our city, they might do a number of things. One, build two stacked townhouses, sell off 370 Ontario Street to another developer, now able to build under that amended official plan. Two, they could build two stacked townhouses, but then build on the vacant lot in 370 Ontario Street, probably now passing their 36-unit proposal that they had in concept two. The third option would be to sell off the entire property under now an amended official plan, or they could submit a proposal to build a six-story unit along the entire length of the block. Now, someone might suggest that that would not be possible due to the 1.5 parking space restriction, but I might suggest it could go underground for parking, or as our friend Mr. Ritz will point out, they can just continue to buy up surrounding properties until they have the required space to be available. Addressing precedent, during the last Heritage meeting, the concern was raised that if this official plan amendment was granted, it would set a precedent for Chancery Development or any mini-developers who would be knocking on your door to begin a march across the city to build six-story buildings. Where are they, please? City planning now said they would not occur if the submission would be reviewed independently. Precedent, by definition, is an action situation or decision that has already happened and can be used as a reason why a similar action or decision should be made. If granted permission to Chancery Development to build a new high-density residential area in what is now a stable residential area within a heritage area on a heritage corridor, how do you say no to any similar request in any similar sensitive area or lack? As you have set precedent. Touching on heritage, how can Chancery Development even make the suggestion they respect heritage? When we saw in their concept number two, a four-story, single-mass building extending the entire block and the whole first story facing onto Ontario Street, the heritage corridor, is a solid wall broken up only occasionally by ventilation grills feeding the parking garage? Hey, a pointy roof doesn't heritage make. Guide to heritage, we should see that new structure does not tower over adjoining property. They have context to the surrounding neighborhoods, and there should be a blending and harmonizing of character to that which exists. Chancery scores zero. You have a number of decisions. This is not a time to be snoozing. You will make one of two decisions regarding the application by Chancery Development to amend the official plan. One decision will have long-lasting positive impact in the site, this neighborhood, and all citizens of Stratford.
One minute.
If you deny the application. This will demonstrate that you are the mayor and councillors we expect to stand behind the official plan that you made comprehensive updates to in 2016. Remember that identifies how the city of Stratford will grow from 2016 to 2033. Nowhere in the intensification report did it ever suggest that the goal could only be met by amending the official plan or cramming all the goals onto one property. It would demonstrate you put the interests of 30,000-plus citizens ahead of the want of a single out-of-town developer. Recognize and respect the importance that heritage means to our city and that you not allow that to be destroyed. Hey, that you instruct Chancery Development to build under the rules of the official plan that they knew existed when they purchased the site. The same rules that all other developers seem to have been able to profit under. Or a decision will have everlasting negative impact on citizens, this neighborhood, and Stratford. The trust in our mayor and councillors to protect its citizens would be lost if you sell out to us, to the first developer that comes to town and demands for its sole purpose of making maximum profit, that you be its puppet. This development will forever show your decision. Each resident of this neighborhood will see it every day and realize the only recourse may be in 2022. In closing, have you read the letters and emails sent by our concerned citizens? Or are they sitting to be trashed in the bin? Fun sense alone says Chancery Development can build on the existing official plan. The site will add to intensification without, within our built boundaries. Heritage would be better protected, and a reasonable profit will still be obtained. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving forward, our next presenter is Ms. Van Loon. Is she available on the line?
Through the Chair, we are working to connect.
Okay, we will wait. Thank you.
After the Chair, councillor Basilakos.
Councillor Basilakos.
I'm just wondering if after the next presenter, we could take a short break, if we could.
That was going to be my suggestion as well. Thank you very much, councillor Basilakos. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Yep.
Hello.
Hello. Yes, is that rude?
Yes, my apologies for that.
That's fine. You go ahead. You have 10 minutes. Please be respectful of that time, and I apologize. I will interrupt at the nine-minute mark. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
I am new to Stratford. My husband and I will soon be the owners of one of the new homes being built on Coburg Street. It was to be our dream home in one of our favorite neighborhoods. You may wonder why Stratford. We have lived and worked for over 30 years in Kitchener, Waterloo. We saw the city grow in areas substantially over the years. And with the development of the light rail transit system in Waterloo, the city began to grow upwards as well. Although some people liked it, it was not what we wanted anymore. So we looked at Stratford. Stratford is very appealing to visitors and new residents alike. We have been coming here as visitors for many years and have now decided to make Stratford our home. We love the smaller, close-knit community atmosphere that it offers. We enjoy the downtown and the culture and the beautiful parks. We have friends who live in Stratford. It has so much to offer us. When we found the house for sale on Coburg Street, it seemed to be the fulfillment of our dreams. We love the beautiful heritage neighborhood and its proximity to the theater and the lake. We were told by the builder's agent that the empty lot behind us would be used for two-story townhomes when we may be offered a purchase. We believed him, and we were okay with it. We have since found out that Chancery Development has applied to build something much larger on the property, potentially two to three times what we were told. A larger-scale development would completely ruin our enjoyment of our new home. Being literally in our backyard, it would dwarf our beautiful home. One of the reasons we bought in this location is because of the great southern exposure. But we would lose that and would be in relative darkness some of the time. We also think that a development of this size could be very busy and noisy. We thought that we were buying in a quiet neighborhood. Since we initially found out about this proposal, my husband and I have had many sleepless nights. We probably would not have bought here if we had known about the development. But now it is too late, and we must deal with whatever happens. We feel somewhat betrayed and helpless. Our dream has turned into something of a nightmare. I respectfully ask you to please consider the negative impact that the acceptance of this proposal would have upon us as new residents of Stratford. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Loon. Any questions for the presenter? Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to request that we take a 10-minute break, and we will return at 5:35, 5:36, and our first presenter will be Richard Beatty at that time. So thank you very much, and we'll see you in 10 minutes. Your sign's on, Martin. Ms. Dufoe, do we have our next presenter available?
Through the chair, Richard Beatty is presently not on the line, but I believe Sharon Collwood is.
Well, then we will go ahead with Ms. Collwood and then come back to Mr. Beatty when he becomes available. I remind all the presenters to please adhere to the time allotted. We still have 13 presenters to go and we want to give every one of those presenters some time or there are allotted times. So Ms. Collwood, if you're available, please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Good. Well, I think we needed that break.
Yeah, thank you.
We need to take a breath and I wanted to start by thanking the councillors for listening to us. You could be doing a lot of other things, but you came councillor because you care for our city. So thank you for listening. When we listen to each other, it gives us the ability to succeed together. This council has already acknowledged the importance of hard urban borders in its vote over the shinny glass factory. With that vote, council made the point that we will not destroy farmland with urban sprawl. However, the other side of the coin must be that we also not destroy our city with indiscriminate and irresponsible intensification. What we need is smart growth for healthy, vibrant and livable communities. This will be a challenge and our greatest tool is the official plan. The Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee has recommended a 30% reduction in greenhouse gases over the next eight years. This means that our development must be as close to neutral as possible. The project we're looking at today is far from neutral. We must consider the alarming carbon footprint of the construction industry and limit the damage it can do to our communities. We must demonstrate to Chancery and to the other developers to follow that environmental concerns come first in Stratford. In 2006, Carl Elefante, former president of the American Institute of Architects, said that the greatest, the greenest building is the one that is already built. That simple statement has become a rallying cry for the sustainability movement. Preservation and sustainability are inextricably linked, whether it be by sequestering carbon through the preservation of forests or by the sequestration of energy by built infrastructure. Demolition releases pollution, increases the strain on landfills and uses indefensible amounts of fossil fuels. In Stratford, it makes no sense to demolish livable, solid brick buildings that signal our heritage and are, on a sample, on a simple commercial level, of great importance to our tourist industry. We were told at the last Planning and Heritage meeting that all projects are considered by the city on an individual basis and that therefore there would be no precedent set in accepting Chancery's proposal. That statement was incomplete. Once the city plan is modified for one developer, it will set a precedent that will be used in appeals to the local planning appeal tribunal in the future. This means the social and environmental damage to one neighborhood will be multiplied in other neighborhoods and the environmental damage will increase exponentially. This is a nightmare situation. We must establish responsible practices. Finally, and I don't mean to be unpleasant here, but this is a landowner who upon gaining ownership, cut down most of the trees, including a mature endangered native magnolia of which there are only 188 remaining in all of Ontario. I understand that ignoring the Species at Risk Act is not something that is dealt with at the municipal level. But I do think there's an attitude to nature and communities seen in the removal of those trees that should give you pause. I would argue that the official plan can be a tool to counteract this kind of attitude and it should be a good guide to help developers form environmentally sound plans. If we show that the official plan has teeth, if we demonstrate that we are truly committed to sustainable development, greedy developers will pass us by. Only those who are willing to compromise and collaborate with the city will participate in our growth. Chancery has made an effort to adapt their plan to our city's requirements. Let's celebrate that. Let's encourage them to go farther. This is a neighborhood that supports responsible development. There should be many points of agreement. The official plan calls for good management of our city, not simple-minded intensification. The neighboring citizens of the Queen Troi project have many excellent suggestions backed up by professional opinion. This should be seen as an opportunity for collaboration and responsible growth. If you see yourself as an environmentalist, you will not accept Chancery's plan for redesignation of the subject lands from stable residential area to high-density residential area. Instead, you will follow the guidance of the official plan to encourage responsible development and develop according to the rules for a stable residential area designation. The term climate emergency is not an exaggeration. This is a five-alarm fire we're living through. We risk unthinkable consequences. This neighborhood issue is of extreme importance for all neighborhoods in our city. And with this vote, you must stand up and be counted. There is a rapidly growing community of environmentalists in Stratford who will support you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Collingwood. Any questions for the presenter? Thank you. And I'm looking to the clerk to see if Mr. Beatty is available, Richard Beatty. And as we're getting ready for Mr. Beatty, I just encourage people that are presenting to please keep in mind not to disparage our city staff in any way. That would be appreciated both by the staff and council.
Through the chair, Mr. Richard Beatty is still not on the line. Sandra Schultes is.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Schultes, are you there?
Through the chair, we are working to connect with.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, certainly. And a reminder, you have 10 minutes. And if you could keep to that, that would be wonderful. And the floor is yours. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Your worship chair, council, I thank you for this opportunity.
No, you've lost some of your volume.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, much better. We'll restart you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll try to be short and sweet. The Ontario Government, Article 14, Section 9, lists requirements for new construction to include open spaces, recreational buildings, depending on the amount of units in the townhome, privacy, safety, adequate air, et cetera. I happened to notice when I looked at these new plans, there doesn't appear to be much green space. The garbage structure that was to be enclosed has now disappeared in the new plans. There's no recreational building, but according to the Ontario Government, Article 14, I believe there should be. No accessible parking spots. The building itself, and I know someone mentioned this earlier, does not appear to be very accessible to those in wheelchairs and even to young parents with children and strollers, you know, large staircases to go up to the units. Doesn't look very safe to me. As well, when I look at the plans, the stairs on the front of the building seem to end at the sidewalk. There's not much frontage there. Looks to be, once the road is widened, a very dangerous situation. Somebody miscalculates, they trip on those stairs, they trip on that sidewalk, they might end up on the road and it's a very busy roadway, as we all know. So that's very concerning to me. The large proposed parking lot, over 40 cars, will result in a lack of enjoyment, privacy in our backyards on Coburg Street, increased exposure to exhaust, poor air quality, winter shading, shadowing, and too much artificial sunlight at night shining in our bedrooms. Most of our master bedrooms, of course, are at the back of the house. That being said, I am pleased to see townhouses being proposed on the lot. However, I'm disappointed to see that it continues to be a request for high density. Townhomes can already provide additional housing, increase density to satisfy provincial mandate, increase tax revenue. There really is no need to increase this to high density in an historical area of the city. The zoning should remain, in my opinion, low or maybe a consideration to medium density, but definitely not high. As mentioned earlier, overnight, if this is rezoned to high density, the land value is going to significantly increase. The developer might just decide to flip the property and not construct. And what has been a very stressful and exhausting experience trying to fight this high-density application, I fear will start again. It's just really devastating to think of that. I have concerns about the exceptions that haven't been listed on this application. Maybe it's not the time to have them, any exceptions to the code listed. But I think to make an informed decision, things should be listed, as well as the fact that the endangered species tree that had been removed wasn't on the original plans. There was no mention of that. It appears that no one was even aware of that. And the new sapling is not on the new plan, which needs to be protected. Basically, going forward, I just really hope that the decision is made to say no to high density. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much for participating. Any questions for the presenter? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to the clerk and ask again. Is Mr. Beatty available?
Through the chair, Mr. Beatty is still not on the line and we were advised previously that he may not be able to attend. I will note, our next presenter, councillor Catherine O'Connor, is available.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Connor, if you're available and ready, then please go ahead.
Through the chair, we are working to connect with Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason I'm calling today is that I want to have the request for the official plan amendment to seek to redesignate the subject land from a stable residential to high residential. And I want this not to be passed. And the second reason I'm calling is that I want the developer to stick to the plan and to develop according to the developmental rules that are already in the stable residential area. And most of the issues that I was going to address have already been addressed by your previous callers. But from a personal point of view, I'm a resident on Coburg Street and a homeowner, and in the last few decades, I've invested time and money in this community, as well as honoring the official city plan. Now, as my family's needs changed, I have owned and improved three houses in this neighborhood. And when I was planning and executing all my renovations and additions, my architects, contractors, and myself, we maintained the historical integrity of the area and followed the rules that were in place for this neighborhood and historical downtown core. I feel that the reason that Stratford continues to attract incredible financial investment from tourists and those of us who choose to move here is the uniqueness of the environment in this city, for a city in southern Ontario. There have been so many incredible efforts made in the past to make this happen and for it to still be here today, that I think we can really work together with this official plan and increase some housing density and, at the same time, maintain this beautiful city of Stratford. So I will relinquish the rest of my time since so many of these issues have been addressed, but I just want to add one thing, that quite a few decades ago, I started my career at Municipal Affairs on Bay Street in Toronto. And through these decades, I've seen the plans that I saw at that time really come to reality and how it's formed our province and our cities and our lives. So I know that this is a very, very important decision that you have to make on this, and I am sure that you will be ethical and mindful of the full impact of it. So thank you for giving me this time tonight, and I will now relinquish the rest of my time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Connor. Questions for the presenter? Seeing none, then we're going to move on to Sarah Topham. Is Ms. Topham available?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Sarah, thank you for joining us. A reminder that you have 10 minutes, and at nine minutes, I will interrupt and let you know you have a minute left, okay? But the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you so much. I would like to begin by commending the clerk for an amazing technological feat in organizing all of this. We've all experienced a lot of these calls over the last year and a half, and you're doing an amazing job. So thank you very much for the smoothness with which this is running. Your worship Chair and members of the council, my name is Sarah Topham, and like my fellow residents, I am here to respectfully request that the City Council deny the Chancery's application to amend our city's official plan. The official plan designates this space as a stable residential area, and to allow it to be changed to a new high-density residential area will impact the surrounding neighborhood in ways that are deeply detrimental and permanent. There is significant frustration in the neighborhood, as you have heard, based in a feeling that council has not necessarily taken the opinions of the residents on board and that perhaps the city planner's opinion carries more weight than the voices of the citizenry. When I consider this, I find myself left with the following question. Why are we considering amending the official plan at the request of an outside developer? Their lives will not be affected by this change, other than the money they will make by compromising this heritage neighborhood and ultimately the city. Through the inhabitants of this area, however, this amendation will affect their day-to-day lives negatively in the ways that my fellow speakers have already outlined. Given these factors, I ask again, why are we even entertaining the possibility of this dangerously precedent-setting change to the official plan? In considering the question for myself, I began to wonder what the purpose of an official plan is, and I found myself on the Ontario Government website, ontario.ca. Here is some of what I found regarding official plans. I would like to quote for you. Quote, "Once an official plan is in effect, it guides all of the municipalities' planning decisions. It means that the local council and municipal officials must follow the plan. All bylaws, including zoning and related bylaws, must conform with the official plan." Unquote. These statements are very clear. More nebulous are the next set of statements, which apply to the meaning and purpose of official plans in regards to the community. It seems to me that these less concrete statements are possibly being ignored by council in your discussions, and so I would like to take this opportunity to bring them to your attention. These websites on the, these statements on the website fall under the heading, "Why do you need an official plan?" The official plan, quote, "Make sure that growth is coordinated and meets your community's needs. Helps all members of your community understand how their land may be used now and in the future. Provides a framework for establishing municipal zoning bylaws to set local regulations and standards like the size of lots and height of buildings. Shows council's commitment to the future growth of your community." Unquote. I don't feel the need to rehash, as Catherine said, everything that has been said so far by my neighbors. But I do want to talk about the word "growth," which appears several times on the ontario.ca pages. When I moved to Stratford just over 20 years ago, it was to work at the festival as an actor. I had no idea that I would end up building a life here. I learned a lot of things at the Stratford Festival, and one of the most important lessons I learned early in my work was about how to allow my work to grow over the course of the life of a play. Growth for an actor in this context involves deepening of understanding and a higher capacity for communication. It is a vital part of your work as an actor. But the most fundamental piece of this lesson about growth for an actor is that there is a clear and important distinction between growth and mutation. When an actor grows, they are better able to connect the play, their fellow audience, and the audience, and their fellow actors with each other. They are better able to welcome everyone into the play without changing the nature of the play, but rather by shining light on what the play already is. When an actor mutates, they end up building blocks between themselves and their colleagues, between the play and the audience, and ultimately, the play and the experience of everyone involved in it suffer. In my experience, there are three things needed for true growth to occur: a solid foundation, discipline, and integrity. Mutation, on the other hand, usually involves some degree of self-interest and a lack of care for the community you are a part of. It seems like the choice between these two paths should be clearer. But here's the thing. Mutation, as destructive as it is, often masquerades as growth. And in the beginning, you move in a direction that is only a tiny bit off the path you intended to be on. And the more time that passes and the more times you choose the path that is away from growth, the more you become embedded in mutation. And then it's very, very hard to go back, to find your center, to be in the place you want to be. I believe that we are at such a crossroads with the Chancery application. I believe, as many of my neighbors do, that approving this application will be another step down the road of mutation in our beautiful city. We have everything we need to stay on the path of growth. We have the foundation, in the form of an official plan, which clearly designates this space as a stable residential area. And we have you, and we are trusting all of you to have the discipline and the integrity to uphold that designation as per Stratford's official plan. To show us, your fellow citizens, your commitment to the true future growth of your community, rather than the permanently damaging mutation that this application would commit us to. I thank you for your work. I thank you for your service. I thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that you lead us in the direction of true, healthy, lasting growth for our city and away from the dangerous path of making changes that will inevitably result in mutation that will harm the city. Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Ms. Topham, any questions for the presenters? Presenter, thank you again. Moving forward, Madame Clerk, I'm looking to see, is Ms. Mason available? There's, I think I see her there.
Yeah.
Ms. Mason, are you... Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. The floor is yours. You have 10 minutes, and I will interrupt at nine, okay? But go ahead. Thank you for joining us.
You won't need to do that. I think I'm only going to do six, so that's...
Thank you.
Greetings, your worship Dan Matheson and city councillors, my fellow Stratford residents and Stratford lovers. I'm thinking back to 1989, when my husband and I moved to what we still think is one of the most beautiful towns existing in Canada. We were both commuting, but we each looked forward to driving back home to lovely Stratford after work. In 1995, I opened a retail store on what is known as the first block on Ontario Street. When it came to erecting outdoor signage on both Ontario and York Street, I had to submit photos of the signs to the Heritage Committee for review and acceptance. Fortunately, I played by the existing rules and guidelines. I respected the Heritage Committee's specifications. The signage was accepted. I was under the distinct impression that the Heritage Committee was, is, pretty powerful. But that was in 1995. As a local business owner, I got involved in various organizations and projects. One was Communities in Bloom. In 1997, I was honored to be interviewed in a video submission as the entry to the International Communities in Bloom Contest held in Spain. I remember expressing how eclectic Stratford is. It's a real big town, a factory town, a world-class class theater town, and even a hockey town. So much pride and attention was encouraged for homeowners, the festival gardens, and of course, the magnificent parklands, the streets, the neighborhoods, the homes, the trees. As you know, Stratford, Ontario, Canada, was... I think the judges chose Stratford because of its attention to heritage, heritage, the keystone, the charm, the beauty of Stratford. In 1997, we sold our first Stratford home very quickly, and we're forced to find another one fast. We found the house on 33 Tro Avenue. This neighborhood grew on us. It's been 24 years. I've decided to leave the technical arguments against the changing of the rules of the game to these experienced and knowledgeable experts, a few of whom we've hired to help us in what has turned out to be a stressful 10 months. Somehow, an out-of-town developer is pushing to change the existing city plan and appears to be getting away with it. Naively, I was under the impression that anyone purchasing would be enamored by and cognizant of the beauty of this heritage-protected area. Had I known the abuse and disregard of our home and property and neighborhood that was to come, I would have moved out of here the minute these properties were sold. I'm going to give you an example. Since the purchase of the property, we have had our cable, internet, and bell severed, not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, not six, not seven, but eight times. I was going to say nine, but you would maybe think I was exaggerating. We had to rely on ourselves to get these matters resolved quickly, or I'm sure we'd still be down and exposed cables would be lying around. Not good with two people relying on the internet alone for work and university. I'm closing now, and I just want to challenge the Heritage Committee to respect the heritage of Stratford, period. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Questions for the presenter from council? Seeing none, thank you again for being involved this evening. Next, I have on my list, and I look to the clerk, is Mr. Landers available?
For the Chair, yes, Stephen Landers is on the line, and we are working to connect him.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Stephen, go ahead. You have 10 minutes?
Don't need that much. My name's Steve Landers. I'm a retired accountant. I've lived in Stratford all my life. I only have a few brief comments. I won't need 10 minutes. Whenever I take a walk in Stratford, I have a wonderful feeling of gratitude and well-being for living in this wonderful little town. It's just, it's unbelievable. My lifelong experience is not something I've learned, but it's the result of incredible efforts and sacrifices made by people who've gone before us, like Tom Orr and Tom Patterson. And it continues to today. We owe it to those far-sighted people who came before us to pass on this wonderful heritage to future generations. It's not ours to keep, it's ours to pass on. Chancery is seeking to overturn the official plan to allow high-density residential development. Overturning an official plan should have some overriding public benefit or public need, for example, when you have to increase floodplain zoning. No need exists at this time to change the official plan. Previous councils went to a lot of expense and trouble to develop, debate, and pass the official plan. Are we to assume that this is just a waste of time and money? Surely, one of the main purposes of an official plan is to preserve and protect this little jewel of the city. And finally, as a lifelong resident, I'm offended that Chancery thinks it can roll over council and by extension, the people of Stratford. Their compromise is to reduce their demand to only three and a half stories, but to have approval for six. Soon do they think they're kidding. For the sake of Stratford's uniqueness, tell them to take a hike. Our city is not for sale. His worship and the Chair and Council, thank you very much for your time. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Landers. Any questions? And I see none, and thank you again for participating this evening. We're moving then down to, next on my list is Robert Ritz. Once again, I look for a clerk.
For the Chair, Mr. Ritz is on the line.
Tatiana, are you the slide person?
Yes, I will pull them up now.
Okay, I'm going to be fast going through these, so if you can pull the first one up. I've got five minutes.
Thank you. And the clock has started. There you go.
Mayor and members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to begin where I think we left off at the last meeting, where Councillor Bunting was requesting the developer to come back with something that was not specifically a three-story building, but another layout or some amendment that would possibly meet middle ground. We also heard from Chancery's planner that the PPS must be complied with, and their last proposal did that, with implications, though, that the references to the official plan we were using did not address intensification. Today, many concerned citizens from the community have stated the official plan should not change. This slide notes PPS preamble stating official plans shall provide clear, reasonable, attainable policies to protect provincial interests and direct development to suitable areas. I noted last time that this was the wrong location for a development of this scale. Slide two, excerpts from our official plan, where it, in the PPS, encouraged intensification. To ensure where intensification of development is proposed in residential areas, it is compatible in terms of scale, density, and design with neighboring development. Stable residential areas are areas where potential development or redevelopment is limited. Any intensification will be modest and incremental, not abrupt, to generally maintain elements of structure and character of the immediate surrounding... of the immediate surrounding residential area. Slide three illustrates that development intensification of underutilized land can happen anywhere within the settlement area and built boundary, which is basically anywhere in the city, not just Ontario Street between Queen and Trow. And where infilling is proposed, the inherent qualities in heritage areas and heritage corridors will be retained, restored, and ideally enhanced. Slide four, so what have we, so what do we have? A block that has been consolidated, that has an empty lot and some existing buildings in a neighborhood that is low density, up to twenty-five units per hectare, with buildings around ten meters high, as the maximum noted in the OP for stable residential areas. Without the consolidation, it would be a development of individual lots at a lesser scale. Slide five illustrates, without consolidation, the block could be fully developed with three buildings on the empty lot and all structures as duplexes permitted by the existing zoning. The density of this development is thirty, thirty-seven units per hectare, the low end of medium density that has a range of twenty-five to sixty-five units per hectare. Look at the Ontario Street block at the bottom of the elevation. Does it fit? Yes. Slide six, with the lot consolidation and demolition of three existing homes. When was the last time that happened in Stratford? Anyways, illustrates how Chancery's revised submission continues to propose a larger-scale eighty-five-unit-per-hectare development with an OP amendment to permit up to a hundred units per hectare and a maximum height of six stories or twenty meters. Look at the Ontario Street block elevation at the bottom of the slide. Does it fit? No. Slide seven illustrates the future with lot consolidation and the OP change. What could be developed with a zone change by demolishing a couple houses and the removal of some significant trees? Does it fit on the Ontario Street block elevation at the bottom of the slide? No. Slide eight illustrates with lot consolidation the type of building with a zone change that could be proposed by another developer that purchased the land from Chancery. After they get the OP amended, it does not fit on the Ontario Street block elevation. Slide nine illustrates with further lot consolidation under the amended OP, how this site could be developed in the future. It truly does not fit on the Ontario Street block. Slide ten illustrates how Chancery could get closer to the ten-meter height by having three buildings with ten units in each. But it is still a high-quality, high-density residential development. Does it fit on the block? Maybe a little bit, better, but not right. Slide eleven illustrates how even Chancery, if he reduces it from ten units to eight, it's still this high-density development at sixty-nine units per hectare. Slide twelve illustrates how this site could be developed without lot consolidation, without demolition of buildings, and without changing the OP. This proposal is the higher end of medium density at sixty-four units per hectare, one less than high. Does it fit in the Ontario Street block? Yes, even with the roots peak slightly above the ten-meter height. Slide thirteen, so what is the middle ground? Councillors, this is it. Chancery's hundred-unit-per-hectare density has, has not come down. However, the low-density residential neighborhood will accept an increased density to the high end of medium residential at sixty-four units per hectare. That does not require a change of OP, a height that is like their homes in a stable residential area, and I have a local developer that would build it. Last slide fourteen, this image has always been our city. Why change it? Councillors, I respectfully request the application as proposed by Chancery be denied because it is not a development where intensification is compatible in terms of scale, density, and design, and the inherent qualities of this heritage area and corridor are retained, restored, and enhanced. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Tatiana. You're capped up.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz. And questions from council for the presenter? Thank you again, Mr. Ritz. Our next presenter is Mr. Sullivan. And I look to the clerk to see if Mr. Sullivan's available on the line. Thank you very much, and a reminder that you have five minutes, and I will apologize for interrupting at four. The floor is yours. Please go ahead.
And I'm assuming you can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I understand I have five minutes, although it is a new proposal after all, or so the, so the report says, but I guess it doesn't matter. Thank you, anyway, to the mayor and council for allowing him to speak. I wish to assure you all I do not live near this development. Therefore, nobody can accuse me of being a nimby. I am very interested in how the city is run and how we can smartly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. First, with respect to process, I put my written comments to the clerk by the deadline for inclusion in the agenda with, with the planner's report. They were not. The convoluted system in use by Stratford whereby the staff are forced to delay their report until after the deadline for comments needs to change. It's just crazy. Second, for those who do live nearby, the definition of significant negative impact is so lax as to be laughable. The chief planner states that so long as shadow impacts are in winter, they aren't significant. Furthermore, that privacy impacts are not significant if the parking lot has some form of landscaping between it and the residences. That landscaping will have to be extremely tall to prevent residents from being able to see into the parking lot and vice versa from their bedroom windows. And tall landscaping will in turn create more shadows. So don't try to grow any vegetables in your backyard. They won't get any light and they'll smell of exhaust. Third, neither the planners nor the developer have taken the climate emergency into consideration. The new buildings will likely use fossil fuels, and there is no provision for electric cars in that parking lot. You will be locking in fifty to a hundred years of greenhouse gases with this development. Today, just today, you agreed to reduce Stratford's emissions by thirty percent in eight years, but not if you keep allowing this kind of development. Finally, and most importantly, is the precedent this council will be setting if they approve this development. The official plan has no high-density residential on it. This will be the first such designation in Stratford. Why is it so important that it be here on the main thoroughfare into the city now laughably called a heritage corridor? When asked specifically about precedent, the planner said the city would consider all future proposals on their own merits. I have provided for you a very important Ontario Municipal Board decision which dealt with the notion of precedent. Page thirty-two of the decision describes a development that would be designed with offset facades and varying roof lines to fit in with the surrounding neighborhoods as if it were a regular city street. Sound familiar? Page forty-eight deals with the financial impacts on the surrounding area. The developer paid three and a half times the going rate for their property. If permitted to build, the adjacent properties would be similarly valued and driven up and would seek a similar zoning. Ultimately, the board chair denied the application on the basis mostly of contagion, that is, once this development was approved, the surrounding lands would undoubtedly apply for the same consideration and given their new values would need it. The parallels here are striking. Others have shown the values of the land, Mr. Ritz, under various forms of zoning. Fully qualified high-density zoning is several times more valuable than the current R1. So what, I hear you say, this is just one small part of Stratford. The problem is, once you, as a council, decide, as the planner suggests, that the official plan as written permits such a conversion in scale in a stable residential area on a heritage corridor, you will be hard-pressed to stop any further developments along any of the corridors. If you try, the Ontario Land Tribunal will quite likely overrule you, pointing to this decision as precedent. And what happens to other stable residential areas that are not on heritage corridors? Can you stop the development that might happen in those places? I understand that my time is limited, but I would urge you, I would entreat you to please do not grant this change to the official plan. The change to the official plan is going to be like a bell ringing in developers' offices all over the southern Ontario that will lure them to come to Stratford and purchase these lands. And these lands will now become more valuable as a result. And that is the opposite of creating affordable housing. That's making housing more unaffordable by making the properties that we now could buy and sell ourselves out of reach. I would urge you to turn down this development and to remember that you're going to be in the process of redesigning the official plan in a few short months, keep with the province's deadlines. So use that time, if you will, to decide how the official plan should deal with high density. But don't do it with just the first application that comes across your desk. I would also ask that since the developer is listed on the agenda as, having permission to speak as though they were a citizen in this forum, I would ask for permission to rebut what the developer says after her speech. I am not thinking that the developer is going to say anything along the lines of what I said. She would probably be rejecting all, all of the arguments that have come before me and all of my arguments. So it will need to be rebutted, and it will need to be rebutted today. This is very unusual. I, I hope that that person actually declares a pecuniary interest in this matter as well. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Thank you again, Mr. Sullivan. Moving forward to our next five-minute presenter is Mr. Battle. Mr. Battle, is he available, Miss Clerk?
Through the Chair, yes, Mr. Battle is on the line. James, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you for joining us this evening. A reminder that you have five minutes and I will indicate one minute left at the four, okay? And thank you again for joining us.
Yes, well, thank you Chairman Ritzma, and good evening, Mayor Matheson and councillors. As you may recall, on behalf of the Festival Area Repairers Association, I spoke with this committee just a month ago with respect to denying the subject motion as a clear breach of our city's official plan. As this presentation is already registered with the city clerk, and all of the other representations have been fully articulated, kindly let me just leap to my very last paragraph. This is not a matter of nimbyism, but in fact, a matter of procedural fairness and natural justice as was articulated by our lawyer Nancy Smith in a letter to the city clerk's office, such that this committee must do the right thing right. Take a firm stance to sustain the integrity of our city's official plan and deny the Chancery application before you. Thank you again for your time and dedication to save our heritage area streetscapes. And in lieu of time, I'd like to pass the baton to the next representation. Thank you very much again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Battle, for joining us this evening. Questions for Mr. Battle from council? Seeing none. Our next presenter on my list is Gary Annandale.
Through the Chair, Gary Annandale is on the line and we are working to connect him now.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Annandale. A reminder that you have five minutes. And a reminder as well that I will interrupt at four, so I apologize in advance. So go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Chair Ritzma, your worship the mayor and committee members. Thanks again for the opportunity to address Planning and Heritage Committee this afternoon. And Stratford's logo is dramatically different. I'm reminded of this when driving into nearby Kitchener Waterloo, as I did recently. But is this what we want to become? Do we want to transform into another faceless Iron Needles Boulevard? Speaking to various people shows the reason people want to move to this area and visit this area is precisely because of its built form. As stated previously, we are more than happy to see appropriate development and appropriate intensification of the area. As you're aware, the city has a twenty-five percent intensification target. So my question is, why does this small site require such massive intensification? Why is more than twenty-five percent intensification required on such a small site, particularly when considering all of the additional development taking place within the city? You've seen our draft proposal as presented by Rob Ritz just a short time ago. This provides more than adequate intensification, meets the requirements of the official plan without radical change, as such as a requirement for a high-density residential area. You've seen the very impressive concept set forth by him. You've heard many opinions and definitions today. But I would like to add one other definition for consideration, and this is not to disparage anybody, but simply to state the situation as we see it. I would like you to consider gaslighting. Political gaslighting is said to occur when information is manipulated to control people, create a sense of confusion and doubt, et cetera. It defies logic to state that it is appropriate to create a new high-density residential area on less than one-half of a block of land in the middle of a stable residential area when more modest intensification is equally appropriate, and I repeat that, equally appropriate in terms of the official plan and the provincial policy statement. No amount of gaslighting can change the fact that neither the provincial policy statement or official plan mandates such radical intensification as proposed by MHBC Chancery. Then it also seems to brush aside important qualifying sections of the official plan and the provincial policy statement to justify the massive amount of intensification proposed. We know that intensification in this area should be modest and incremental. Again, no amount of gaslighting can convince Stratford residents that this proposed development is modest, that it is incremental, and that it is required under the official plan, particularly given the city's target of twenty-five percent. No amount of gaslighting can change the fact that the density provisions of the official plan are far exceeded and require a very significant official plan amendment. The proposed resubmission is still not appropriate for this area. Contrast this to our presentation that clearly demonstrates development within the official plan can be done properly and can be done to enhance the area. No amount of gaslighting can change the fact that even with the mayor half-story reduced heights of the MHBC Chancery proposal, the building still exceeds the official plan and zoning for the area and will require significant amendments. No amount of gaslighting can change the fact that if the MHBC Chancery approval is given, a precedent will be set and other developers will attempt to do the very same thing. As mentioned by Mike Sullivan, the OLT has recognized this trend in other areas and labeled it as contagion. It is gaslighting to state that if this proposed development and official plan amendment is approved, it will not set a precedent. Everyone knows it will.
One minute.
But why is the city brushed aside our professionals? Dr. Marcus Lutono is more qualified or equally qualified as the planners today, and I suspect the OLT will recognize this. Refusing to recognize that development in this area shall conserve significant cultural heritage as indicated in the PPS meets the definition of gaslighting. In summary, and in the interest of time allowed to me, it is our opinion that the proposed development far exceeds anything remotely reasonable for this area and invite MHBC and Chancery to withdraw their application, resubmit a negotiated proposal that respects the official plan. We believe the committee should reject the current proposal. If you do not, basically, you're telling the Stratford residents that our official plan and zoning bylaws are of no significance. These can be changed to suit, that they can be changed to suit any outrageous proposal. And I ask in closing, what is the point of citizen engagement in the upcoming review of the official plan if you agree to this change in the official plan? If you agree to the proposal, the message sent to everybody who has participated in the process to date and a large number of residents who are observing but not actively participating is that their opinion does not count. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Annandale. Questions for the presenter? Seeing none. On my schedule, the next individual I have is Emily Elliott, and looking once again to the clerk.
Through the Chair, Emily Elliott is on the line and we are working to connect her. Emily, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you, and Miss Elliott, thank you for joining us. Thank you. And Ms. Elliott, thank you for joining us. A reminder, you have five minutes, and I will interrupt. I apologize at four, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mayor Matheson, and members of the committee. My name is Emily Elliott, and I'm a planner with MHBC Planning here tonight on behalf of the owner, Chancery Developments Limited. I'd like to start by thanking Bridge for her presentation. We've reviewed the staff report and support the recommendations. My presentation tonight will focus on the revisions to the proposal following council's referral from the September 27th Planning and Heritage Committee meeting. Next slide, please. The applications were initially filed in October of last year. The initial proposal spanned the entire length of the site with 36 units. There was a two-story element at the corner of Ontario and Trow, and the remainder of the building was four stories. Next slide, please. Following the public meeting in January, the proposal was revised to eliminate the two-story element fronting on Trow and introduce an outdoor amenity space at the corner. The building was also reduced to 34 units. The revised proposal was presented to the public at a neighborhood meeting and formally resubmitted in May. Next slide, please. In response to the feedback from council and area residents at the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting last month, the proposal was again revised and resubmitted. This revised proposal included a change to the built form from one four-story apartment building to two three-and-a-half-story stacked townhouse buildings. The stacked townhouse buildings are half a story and three and a half meters shorter in height than the previous apartment building proposal. A typical story has a height of about three meters, so the reduction in height is similar to one story. With respect to the calculation of building height, I think it's important to note that building height is measured from grade to the top of the pitch roof. The roofline shown on the elevation was designed to reflect the rooflines of existing single detached homes along Ontario Street to contribute to the compatibility of the proposed development. The change in the built form also results in the massing along Ontario Street to be broken up through a gap between the buildings and an amenity area situated towards Ontario Street. The existing building at 370 Ontario Street is now proposed to be retained with no changes to the building or its property contemplated, and this property has been removed from the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment applications. Next slide, please. This slide shows, provides a sketch of the front elevation. The proposed stacked townhouse built form continues to complement the surrounding neighborhood and has been designed to incorporate heritage influences of the area, including a pitched roofline, front porches, and entrances facing Ontario Street, street-facing windows, and a building setback consistent with existing development on Ontario Street. Next slide, please. As you can see here, the existing house at 370 Ontario is proposed to be retained, so there will be no development adjacent to the homes on Trow Avenue. There is proposed to be a 21-meter setback from the rear of the proposed building to the rear yards of the homes fronting on Coburn Street. This is an increase of six meters from the apartment proposal and is a result of the change to the built form. Surface parking continues to be provided to the rear of the site to minimize the visual impact on Ontario Street. Opportunities for buffering landscaping and fencing will be accommodated along the North Early Lot Line. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of changes to the statistics for the proposed development from the initial submission to the current concept. Significantly, you can see that there has been a reduction of six units from the initial proposal. There's been a reduction to the building height from half a story and three and a half meters. There has been an increase to the Queen Street setback by 0.5 meters, which will provide additional opportunities for landscaping. The setback to Trow Avenue will be unchanged from its existing condition. There has been an increase to the interior side yard setback from 1.69 meters to 21, and it's noted that that 1.69 meter setback in the previous proposal did only apply to the Westerly portion where the site narrowed. However, the remaining portion was setback 15 meters, so the 21-meter setback does represent a six-meter increase. There's also been a reduction by 14 properties from the initial proposal. Overall, the parking satisfies the requirements of the zoning bylaw. Overall, this slide shows that there have been significant changes to the proposed development in response to comments received through the application. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the nature of the proposed applications, which Ms. Bridge described in her presentation. Most significantly, the site-specific zoning bylaw has been drafted to include a maximum building height of 14 meters and three and a half stories, a density cap of 91 units per hectare, which is 30 units, as well as planting strip requirements along the North Early Lot Line. These provisions have been included specifically to ensure compatibility between the proposed development and surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Finally, the proposed development has been revised significantly from the previous proposal in response to the referral motion. Significantly, the building height has been reduced. The built form has been modified to stack townhouses, and there has been a further decrease in the number of units, a greater setback to the North Early Lot Line, and massing has been broken up along Ontario Street. It's also resulted in the retention of the existing home at 370 Ontario Street. The proposal continues to assist the city in achieving its intensification target and housing mix targets as set out in the official plan. It represents an opportunity for intensification on an underutilized site that's appropriately located in a mixed-use area within walking distance to downtown along an arterial road and with convenient access to existing transit services. The proposal addresses the city's policies for the creation of new high-density residential areas. It's consistent with the PPS and conforms to the official plan. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions from council? Counselor Burbak?
Thank you. I was wondering if, Ms. Elliott, you could comment on any proposed environmental, I guess, energy savings or environmental climate change proposals that might be included in this development?
Through the chair, thank you. At this point, sustainability measures haven't been considered as it's preliminary in terms of the development of the concept, and that would be something that would be considered in the site plan approval application.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Elliott. Our next presenter is Ms. McKay, Linda McKay.
Through the chair, during the meeting, staff received correspondence from Ms. Linda McKay withdrawing her delegation request for this evening.
Thank you. And I'm just wondering, did we confirm that Mr. Beatty wasn't, Richard Beatty wasn't going to be available this evening?
Through the chair, Mr. Beatty is still not on the call.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I believe if I'm correct, and I look to the clerk, I believe that's all our presenters as scheduled.
Through the chair, that is correct.
Thank you. So I want to thank those individuals that did come forward and presented counsel here this evening. It's much appreciated. So moving on to the next item, that there is a motion that the correspondents from Gary Annandale dated October the 5th, 2021, regarding the official plan amendment application, OPA 01-20, and Zone Change Amendment Z06-20, with regards to the addresses of 370 to 396 Ontario Street be received for information. A mover for that. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney, and Counselor Basalacos will second that. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? And any opposed? And that is unanimous? Moving to the next item. Prior to the staff recommendation, I'm going to go back to council with regards to there is a staff recommendation, but are there any questions? Or I will read the staff recommendation, and perhaps there'll be a mover and a second or not, or another motion, and then we will go from there. So there is a staff recommendation that the application OP 01-20-20 to redesignate 380, 388, 390, and 396 Ontario Street from residential area to high-density residential area in the application Z06-20 to amend the zoning on 380, 388, 390, and 396 Ontario Street from MUR to C1 to residential fourth density R4 bracket 2 to permit stacked townhouse dwelling units with the site-specific regulations be approved for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The request is in conformity with the goals, objectives, and policies of the official plan. The official plan amendment and zone change will provide for a development that is appropriate for the lands. The public was consulted during the application circulation and comments that have been received in writing or at the public meeting have been reviewed, considered, and analyzed within the planning report. And that council passed a resolution that no further notice is required under Section 34 Bracket 17 of the Planning Act. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. So I would like to move this with a slight modification that I have discussed with the manager of planning. I'd like to move the official plan amendment as an official, or I'm sorry, a special official plan amendment to have a high-density special with a maximum height of 14.5 meters and a maximum density of 91 units per hectare applied. And then I would like to speak to this afterwards as well, please.
Thank you. A second for that amended motion, or that motion. Counselor Henderson will second. Thank you, and I'll come back to Counselor Ingram for your comments, please.
Thank you. So I have a number of comments, and I'm going to try and make it very brief, so I'm going to go fast. Hopefully, you can all keep up with me. There was a number of comments today about this being a precedent-setting application and us not having any high-density residential developments within the city. If you recall, 235 and 255 John Street North, which is the former Avon School site, there are two four-story apartment buildings there. They are at 100 units per hectare on that site. So this would be below that, below the height limit, below the density on that site. Similarly, we have another application before us that we have had a formal public meeting for that's at the corner of Lauren Ave and Queensland Drive, the former Sobe site. It was the HIP Developments proposal for seven-story apartment building, and their density proposal is 102 units per hectare. So again, much higher in both height and density. The reason that people have the ability to make an official plan amendment application is because when you have a very broad and general planning document that is policy-based, you can't possibly consider or anticipate every potential development that is going to come through. You can't possibly consider every potential lot configuration that you have within your municipality, because they are all different. And so that's why the Ontario Planning Act allows you to make these amendment applications. It is available to every property owner. It is a right afforded to you when you purchase a property anywhere in Ontario. So to say that people are just coming into Stratford, and they're making these applications, it has happened in the past. It's going to happen again in the future, and it is not different in Stratford from any other municipality in the city or in the province. The official plan is going to be open for a five-year review. It is not being opened up entirely. There are sections of the official plan that will be reviewed and perhaps updated, but the official plan review, the five-year review, is not meant to be a fulsome comprehensive new official plan. So I just want to make that clear to everybody. There are only portions of the official plan and the policies within them that will be reviewed and potentially changed. As for the comments about the environmental conservation and heritage conservation, you know, just because people are making development applications does not mean they are not environmentally conscious. That does not mean they are not heritage conscious. And there are developments throughout this province that incorporate heritage features and incorporate environmentally conscious features, but they are new developments, and this occurs because we are not stuck in time. So yes, we will conserve heritage as much as we can. Yes, we will be environmentally conscious, but new development is going to occur, and it's going to occur in a sympathetic manner. And I do feel like the architectural concept that has been put forward for these townhouses does fit the neighborhood. There are a number of elements that are very similar to the housing styles that are in the area. The other thing that I really want to talk about is young people trying to enter the housing market and the ability for them to be able to afford housing types. Stacked townhouses are traditionally on the lower end of the housing market. They are generally more affordable, certainly more affordable than single-family dwellings, certainly more affordable than somebody detached dwellings. And we have to have different types of housing within our city to allow people to enter the homeownership market. And I think this is going to allow us to have some people come and be able to be homeowners along the downtown core without substantial exponential home prices. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that yes, having single-detached dwellings is really lovely, and lots of people can afford them, but there are a lot of people that can't afford them, and they need to have other housing types available to them. So I'm going to leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. I have Counselor Seven next.
Thank you. I would first like to thank all the delegations tonight. I think it's great to see so much community involvement, and I appreciate everybody taking the time. Before I comment, I would like to request a recorded vote for this motion, please. My first concern, I don't support the motion on the floor. I don't support the change. One of the things I'm uneasy with the shadow study, I think sunlight is arguably more important in the winter. It's when you're inside most, and to... So I guess that's all I'll say regarding that. And my other comment is that because this is Ontario Street, I feel like the fact that this property is indeed a stable residential area is not carrying as much weight as it maybe should, or is being somewhat overlooked. If this were another area, I feel the changes may not be recommended. I think, for me, we haven't had, as I mentioned last time, you know, there's homes all across the street. People are living in there. It's residential, you know, pretty well all around it, in front and behind. So I think that needs to be, that needs to be brought to the forefront, for sure. I think the existing plan, I think it allows for adequate intensification. And I don't support a change. I think, you know, we're making this change. They want, you know, the change is being proposed for half a story difference. I think, whatever the zoning is there in the official plan now, I think that is adequate, in my opinion. So I do not support the change.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Counselor Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also don't support the motion on the floor. I think we're talking about a heritage corridor. I actually owned a house directly across the street. I don't know it now, but I did it one time. It's a stable residential area, and we heard from a person that just bought a house in that area believing that we have an official plan. We would respect the official plan, and to just, I believe, arbitrarily change it. The owner of this property, if they want to come back with a proposal in the official plan, the way it is right now, it would be accepted. But I just believe because of the heritage corridor, and we've heard from a lot of people here, a lot of passionate people that are in the area, they live in the area. I think we should respect the requests that they've asked us today. And so on that grounds, I don't support the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Clifford? Other comments or questions from council? And any other questions or comments? So at this time, there is a motion on the floor, and I'm going to ask the clerk if you could read the motion so that we are clear in the motion that was moved by Counselor Ingram and seconded by Counselor Henderson.
Through the chair, it is my understanding that the motion on the floor is that application OP 01-20 to redesignate 380, 388, 390, and 395 Ontario Street from residential area to a special high-density residential area to permit maximum height of 14.5 meters and a maximum density of 91 units per hectare. And application Z06-20 to amend the zoning on 380, 388, 390... And application Z zero six dash twenty to amend the zoning on three eighty, three eighty-eight, three ninety and three ninety-six Ontario Street from MUR and C one to a residential fourth density R four bracket two permit stacked townhouse dwelling units with site-specific regulations be approved for the reasons noted on the agenda. And that council passed a resolution that no further notice is required under section thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act.
Thank you. So if there's no further comments or questions, then I would invite you to go forward with recorded vote.
Thank you through the chair. Starting with Counselor Seven, please state whether you are in support or opposed to the motion that I just previously read. Counselor Seven.
Oppose.
Counselor Bunting. You're muted.
Unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me? Oh, yes. I support.
Counselor Vassalakos.
Support.
Counselor Ingram.
Support.
Counselor Burbak.
Support.
Mayor Matheson.
Support.
Counselor Henderson. Art. Counselor Beatty.
Support.
Chair Ritzma.
Opposed.
Counselor Clifford.
Opposed.
Counselor Gaffney.
Oppose.
So through the chair, that is seven in support, four opposed. There were no declarations of community interest and there are no members absent.
Thank you. So I would declare that motion carried. And moving forward, the next item is a motion to adjourn the Planning and Heritage Committee meeting. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, we have a motion to receive the correspondence that was listed on your agenda.
And, and I thought we had done that earlier, but certainly and I believe you're talking about the motion that the correspondents from the following citizens regarding the official plan amendment be received for information. Is that correct?
The chair, that is correct.
So a mover for that. Thank you, Counselor Ingram. We'll move it seconded by Counselor Seven. Thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. And thank you for adjusting that. I appreciate that. So no further corrections. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Clifford. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order any declarations of community interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. You'll see the subcommittee minutes are attached from our October thirteenth menu. Delegations, there's none scheduled. Reporter, the manager of Ontario Works. Ken, would you like to say a few words about the Housing Focus Street Outreach Program?
Thank you through the chair. This report speaks to a partnership. We are moving forward with Choices for Change in the Stratford Police Department to help increase the, the homelessness team with by two street outreach workers who will be working some after-hours and weekend shifts to help address the issue of homelessness and apparently house that we are seeing. And the Stratford Police have used a provincial grant to, to, to buy a vehicle as well as some technology for the workers to help with the support in their endeavors to rehouse the numbers that we are seeing. Cause as you know, through this current pandemic, we are seeing higher than average numbers. Most recent numbers on our by-name list have identified a hundred and nineteen individuals experiencing chronic homelessness through a consolidated municipal service area. So this speaks to that.
Thank you very much. So the motion is that the report titled Housing Focus Street Outreach Program be received for information. Counselor Gaffney's moving it. Counselor, any comments, questions? Counselor Ritzma?
Yeah, and just, and I, and I believe I already know the answer to this, but just confirming that we're looking at these particular workers, which I, I think is an outstanding move here that will focus on after-hours and weekends. Is that correct?
Yes, through the chair, that is correct.
That's brilliant. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? So thanks for all your work on this and I hope you have good weather. Although it's very important for the people that are homeless too, right? Anyway, all in favor? Carried. And I don't, there's not, there's no other new business. I look for German. Counselor Clifford's moving it. Counselor Beatty's seconding it. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Council reconvene and I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through your worship, item fifteen point one is declarations of community interest made at standing. Are there any declarations to be restated at the reconvene?
I declared one item for one of the Planning and Heritage as I am a shareholder in one of the corporations involved in the transaction.
Through your worship, moving to item fifteen point two, reading of the bylaws. There is one bylaw listed and that is the confirmatory bylaw. And this requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Moving first and second reading, Counselor Ingram and Counselor Ritzma of the confirmatory bylaw, bylaw eleven point nine. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaw is Counselor Bunting and Counselor Gaffney moving in seconding. Bylaw eleven point nine, read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Clifford. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Thank you.